Good evening and welcome to the sixth meeting of fiscal year 2022. I thought we could go around and introduce ourselves. My name is Denny Swenson, Chair. Meredith?
Meredith Hall, member.
Kathleen?
Kathleen O'Donnell, member.
Cheryl?
Cheryl Taggias, member.
And Rich?
Rich Beeler, Secretary.
And our staff. Allison?
Allison Quinn, Assistant Director of Planning and Community Development.
Thank you. Julia?
Julia Getman, Clerk.
Thank you, Julia. And Tim Churinsky may be joining us later. He's at another, I think, a 40B hearing. So, is it okay if I let these folks in? Oh, yes.
Yeah. Yeah, Ned Corcoran's in the waiting room, too. So, yeah. Might as well.
Okay. Excellent. Okay. All right, then. Welcome, everyone. Our meeting won't be televised live tonight. It will be recorded. So people can look tomorrow. In accordance with the governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, people may participate via Zoom. The ID and passcode are available on the planning board agendas, found on the planning board page on the Town of Milton website. Citizens may view on cable access during repeats, live streaming, or at a later date on the Cable Access website. Okay, so our next our next meeting dates are October 14th and 28th via Zoom until we hear otherwise about masks in town hall.
Can I just make a request on that?
Sure.
I went to a zoning board hearing in Danvers the other day. And by Zoom, and the zoning board was in the room, you know, in person, and members of the public were there as well. And so I'm surprised that we can't do some sort of a hybrid thing.
We can, we can talk with town staff. The last time I asked about that, there were technical issues that we hadn't yet resolved as a town. I, I, I'm happy to ask again. I would love to have these meetings live. We had an incident where, you know, Kathleen, because you were one of the people that had to isolate. We had a case happen. Yeah, so I think we went into caution mode, but I'm happy to revisit that. But I guess for the sake of expediency, we could call next meeting, October 14th, a Zoom meeting. And, and at that meeting, we could determine if we could possibly do some form of hybrid on the 28th.
Or in person.
I'm sorry, in person. Right. Okay. How does that sound to the rest of the board? Carry on Zoom on the 14th and revisit whether we can go live on the 28th.
Sounds fine.
Okay. Sounds good. Okay, great. All right, did we want, did anybody have any changes to the minutes? I did not have any changes.
I did, Denny.
Oh, you did?
And I, they're in the OneDrive folder.
Okay. Did you make those changes today?
I did. Sorry, it was probably late. It was today.
That's okay.
I emailed them today.
Oh, that's okay. I just missed them. So we will approve those next time. That's okay.
Was it to both?
For both, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
They were pretty minor. I mean, so, yeah.
Yeah. I just didn't have a chance to see them. Okay. Allison, did you want to do a staff update?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Would you like to do a staff update? It's up to you.
Yeah, sure. I can share with you briefly. After we have the Milton Village tour with the consultants who are working on the design guidelines, Tim and I followed up with a woman from Historic Boston Incorporated that I used to work with when I worked for CPA Boston, and she really helped create a roadmap to look at opportunities for preserving the old lockup. So that's kind of exciting. They, they don't typically do work outside of Boston, but she's, she's kind of created a cheat sheet for us. So Tim and I are looking into that. And other than that, we, you know, Tim's been very, very busy with the 40B hearings. As you all know, the ICE house closed out, and he's thinking that 582 may be forthcoming. And that's really, that's where we're at right now. We're waiting to hear back on a couple of grants that we applied for, and I'll update you on those as we get more information.
Okay. Well, that's excellent. Thank you for that report. So the next thing we have on our agenda is Citizen Speak. So at this time, any member of the public is welcome to speak about any matter on their minds. The public will also have the opportunity to speak on our agenda items as they come up. So I just wanted to tell the public that our agenda items are 440 Granite Avenue, Amendment of Rules and Regulations relating to a Tree Protection Language Edition, Amendment of a Special Permit for Wentworth Farms. So if you wanted to talk on any of those topics, you could wait until those topics arose, or you could, I suppose you could speak now, but we, we would like you to speak at that time. So is there anyone here who would like to speak tonight during Citizen Speak? Please raise your hand.
Hey, Danny? So everybody is in the same room, I think. So I don't know, maybe you want to, like, everybody should probably unmute until they raise their hand, just because it could get a little, there's a lot of folks on this call.
Yeah.
I'm already hearing background noise.
I am, too. There are people who have their, their computer unmuted, if you could please mute it at this time, so your discussion won't be televised. Okay, I can't tell. I don't know if Cable Access can help me with this, or if...
They should be able to. Somebody should be up.
Yeah.
So Jenny, can you, if you can't, you can't see at all who has their hands raised, correct?
Correct, I can't.
Okay, so let me try and help you. Bettina or Sealy? She has her hand raised.
I'd actually want to hear from her. Would love to.
Allison, can we also have Cable Access, like mute people that aren't speaking?
Uh, we can ask.
Yeah. Because this is not going to be easy to hear people.
Yeah. There, there are people...
It sounds like somebody has a television on. I know, if everybody that is not a member of the board can mute, I think it's going to make this possible. Otherwise, I don't think we can hear.
Yeah. Yes, somebody...
Whoever's phone number ends in 284?
Thank you.
Just...
Thank you. That, that seemed to solve it, didn't it?
Yes, I just muted you. Please don't take offense to it. So Bettina has her hand raised, and I'm going to ask you to unmute.
Thanks. Hi, everybody. Is this an appropriate time to lend comment to the 440 Granite Ave?
That, that will be next on the agenda.
On the agenda.
Mind, that would help us, because I'm afraid if I open that one up, then we'll be in...
Absolutely. I'm just, I'm totally mindful of that, and I, and I hold my comment until the appropriate time.
Okay, thank you so much. Do we have anyone else here to speak on something other than agenda items of 440 Granite Ave, Rules and Regulations, or the Wentworth Farms Special Permit? Can you see any hands raised, Allison? I'm, I cannot.
Danny, I scrolled through. I do not see anybody else with a hand raised now.
I didn't raise my hand, but I can speak to that matter if we're going to address that now.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. Are you, did you want to speak to something other than 440 Granite Ave?
Oh, sorry. No, I'll wait.
Okay, because that will be next on our agenda. Okay. All right, if there's no one else here to speak on Citizen Speak, I would like to open the public hearing for 440 Granite Ave Site Plan Approval. Do we need to do a vote on that or anything, Kathleen? We can just open it?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So. Okay. So I thought we could start by hearing the update from the applicant. So can we let the applicant in? Allison, do we have the, does it, do we know who wants to represent the applicant today?
I'm here to represent the applicant, Mary McHendrick.
So Mary and the team are here. I do not have the authority to make you a co-host. Milton Access, can we have Mary and maybe everyone on her team can raise their hands and we can get them as co-hosts?
Okay. Whenever you're ready, Mary, and we're interested to hear your update.
Okay, thank you. I'm Mary McHendrick. I represent the applicant. And I do believe this is the fifth meeting of a, of a public hearing on 440 Granite Ave, which is a development proposal. At the meeting tonight, I believe we have with us Michael Moore, and we may have Pat Costello as well. They are the developers. We have Ellen Anzalone, Tony Xiao, and Rob Law. They're all from Fine Gold Alexander Architects, and they're going to be doing some visual presentation with you tonight, an explanation. I only have a few introductory remarks. I did provide a letter to the planning board, and I tried to review most of the questions that have been asked to date and where we are in terms of answering them. And I, I guess I just want to be, we now have on the stormwater and engineering peer review, I believe that's now complete. The town engineer has responded that she's satisfied with the response, the, the second letter from the company that was reviewing our, our stormwater drainage and engineering for this project. On the traffic engineering and park, traffic and parking, we have sent back additional data and responses. We did that last week. And we are waiting now to get a response back from the peer review engineer. We're hoping to get that soon. And then it depends on whether they ask for more information, or they say that their comments have now been satisfied. Where we will be on that. So we're hoping to wrap up the parking and planning, parking and traffic peer review shortly. We are continuing to talk about with the companies on placing utility lines underground for that, the task there is to get estimates of every detail of what would have to be done, because the developer would have to assume that cost. So we won't know until we have those costs whether we can say for sure that we can do that. It will be, it will be a substantial expense, and we'll keep you updated as soon as we have more information. We've also met with the Select Board. We met with the Master Plan Implementation Committee and the Affordable Housing Committee. They both voted to, to support the concept for this project. The Select Board is supposed to be taking a vote, but I don't know whether they're doing that tonight. I haven't seen their agenda. In any case, the purpose of meeting with those boards was to get feedback and comments, any criticisms or concerns. And we did, it, it was interesting to meet with them and, and hear their, their, I guess, their perspective. The Select Board is a little different, you know, they, they sit, have, have a different position from the planning board. We were interested in their perspective, which may be different from the planning board. They, they certainly seem to be supportive of the way the project looked and the general concept. But we'll see whether we get more feedback from them. And then finally, before we open, you know, we start discussing our, our visuals, I just want to say, you know, we began this hearing process, and I, I want to say it again tonight. This is a very unique site, and this is a unique application, because we're trying to apply for site plan approval under the assumption that we will be able to get all of the relief that we need from the Board of Appeals. But any approval that you give us will have to be conditioned on getting that approval, and we aren't going to know until we finish this process whether we can do that. There are advantages and disadvantages. I mean, we don't go about things this way usually, and we didn't do it lightly. But this is such an unusual site, such a challenging site, that we decided to undertake this task, and I appreciate the time the planning board has spent with us working through the details, trying to figure out what the issues are, and attempting, at least on our part, to address all of those concerns. It's a difficult site because of the huge impact the expressway has. There is no deck in front of this, this site, these parcels. There isn't even much of a separation from the expressway. There's just Granite Ave. It's extremely noisy. It's quite dirty. There's a tremendous environmental impact from the expressway. So i- if you were to ride zoning for East Milton Square, it seems likely that this site might still need an additional form of relief in order to be the right development for this site. If you were to ride zoning for this site, it's not at all clear to me that it would be the right zoning for East Milton Square. So that's why we've approached it this way. I realize it's difficult for everybody. I hope we've learned from it, and we expect to wrap up our presentation this evening. I think we've given you as much information as we can. We'll see at the end of the meeting whether we still feel that way. So we are hoping to get some deliberation, you know, a close of the hearing soon as possible, and have the planning board deliberate and give us their, what their final evaluation is. I'd like to introduce Tony Xiao, and we will like to request that we share screens. So we're going to show you a few more slides. Some of them are summaries, and some of them are visual. One slide shows the view of this development from the other side of the expressway. I think the planning board asked for that the last time we met with you. So Tony, if you're ready, I think we'd like to begin sharing screens. I don't know what you have to do at your end to let us do that, but we request that you do that.
Access, I think you need to allow them the capability to share their screen.
I have the presentation on my computer if, if I could get access to be able to share. Thank you.
Okay, Rob Law.
Yeah.
Milton Access. Can you allow Robert Lauder's screen share? Do you, Barbara, do you see on the bottom of your screen?
Yes.
An icon that says share screen?
Yes, it says host disabled participant screen sharing.
Oh, boy. Okay.
Allison, try going to where his name appears on the right and click more. Or actually at the bottom where this share screen is, allow multiple people to share a screen.
I, I've got that. I just can't.
That works.
You got it? Okay.
Yes.
Thanks, Cheryl. Crisis avoided.
Good job, Allison.
Thank you very much, members of the planning board. And we're going to try to go through this.
Somebody needs to mute.
Okay. I'll start again. Again, thank you very much, members of the planning board, as well as members of the public for attending tonight's meeting, and we look forward to having, again, a review of this, of this project, as Mary said, that this is the fifth meeting, that we're going to be showing you where we are in the current design. So I think without further ado, let's just go right into it. So as I think you all probably know, this site is located at 440 Granite Avenue, at the intersection of Granite Ave, which is at the bottom, and the Mechanic Street, which is in the course on the diagonal bias. And I want to, again, restate some of the issues that we believe are important for the project as well as for the community. So as far as the development is concerned, this is a home ownership project, and it's really targeted towards empty nesters and young couples. It is not really targeted towards families, given the size of the units. 10% of these units will be affordable. It also will be helped to meet the needs for the town's housing production plan in order to meet critical needs in the community. It's also going to provide much-needed Class A commercial space, which will essentially double the existing space that's currently on the site. And there will be a significant increase to the tax base, approximately $300,000 annually, or almost a tenfold increase as a result of this development. And we believe it forms a gateway building to the town in East Palm Square, and its commercial space will also house additional town amenities as it evolves. I think the other thing that we really feel is important to stress here is the sustainability goals and what we believe are really critical impacts of this project we believe will provide. And one of the most important things that we are going to state here is that this is going to be all-electric sourced building. And we believe it actually will, if it proceeds, will be the first mixed-use building in this part of Milton that is all-electric. This is part of the movement, we believe, firmly in a moving away from fossil fuels. And I think this is one of the significant issues that we believe in as far as this project. It also consists of faultable tanks on the roof, further providing sustainable strategies with respect to the building's use and electric parts. And the other part that we want to really emphasize here is that we are looking at a very efficient, fully automated parking system. And for those of you who've had the opportunity to tour some of those examples in and around the city, for, for example, this minimizes the footprint required for parking, also reduces things such as carbon emission, and maximizes the amount of parking in the smallest amount of space as a result of using this approach. We're also going to provide the ability to have charging stations for electric vehicles within this automated parking system, which has the capability to go all the way up to 100% electric charging stations as, as future-proof, ready in terms of the changing environment and opportunities for electric vehicles in this development. It is also going to have a very high thermal performing envelope, as, as well as a high-efficient mechanical system. We are going to provide a green roof on the second level, which is facing towards the back, to both reduce the heat island effect and to absorb stormwater runoff. There'll be adequate and substantial bike storage facilities provided both on the ground level and within the basement of the project. They will use sustainable materials with recycled content throughout, and we will harvest the rainwater and use it for plant watering on the project. So we leave there's important sustainable goals that we want to stress about this particular development. As Mary mentioned, we've had a number of meetings which occurs over now the past, since October 2020, and it's, it's literally almost a year of meeting, including five in front of this planning board, including tonight's meeting. So as you can see here, we've had a number of meetings, both with the Planning Commission, East Neighborhood Association, Traffic, addition planning board members, as well as other entities and organizations, as well as meeting with local residents in and around the area. So this first drawing is essentially a site plan or landscape plan. This is really emphasizing what we're doing on the site itself. Granite Ave, again, is at the bottom of the page, and Mechanic Street is on the diagonal at the upper right. So what we really want to stress, a couple of key things as far as the site goes. As we look at the overall project, the Granite Ave opportunity here is that we're, we're increasing the number of parking spaces because we're essentially limiting three driveways that currently exist into the current retail tenants, so that by eliminating those driveways, we're able to gain additional parking along Granite Ave. And as part of that, we also provide two of the landscape, excuse me, parking spaces as loading and pickoff. I can, Robert, if you need to hover your mouse over the areas, that would be great. Thank you. So that's one of the things that we want to stress about the increase in parking along the street. As we continue to move around the sided street on Mechanic Street, we're also looking at the opportunity to develop a single entry point only going into the automated parking garage system. So the rest of it will not have vehicular drive-through cut-throughs. This is in order to limit the amount of access and curbs that's along Mechanic Street, bringing into the garage. In terms of the treatment around the site itself, there are some significant things that we want to point out. We are proposing enhanced tree, treescape planting, both along Granite Ave and Mechanic Street. We're also looking to improve the streetscape in terms of the sidewalk material. So for example, in the orange color, we're proposing a brick banded edge facing and framing at the edge of the sidewalk with granite curbing. These are things we actually have seen in East Milton Square in terms of its development in the streetscape. So we believe that that's an important thing to try to relate to, and I think improves the streetscape substantially. We're also looking at other planting opportunities at the corner, for example. We're creating a planting opportunity to emphasize the ability to create a softer edge. And as we begin to move around the sides of the building, we also look at areas that enhance other pants, landscape features, including greenscape around the transformer area that Robert is circling. We also provide additional parking spaces, which are four shown in this instance, that are at the back intended for the building's use, probably, probably primarily for the retail tenants' use. And then we also plant along the western edge, the green buffer, which includes both a combination of hedges to screen as well as a green edge along that side. So these are important things that we're emphasizing. We're also enhancing further streetscape, such as the ability to, you know, bring lighting, if we're able to move the telephone wires underground. As Mary mentioned, that would be a really great thing, and also creating a, a, a sort of decorative streetscape and bike racks and other things that occur along the whole edge. So we believe we're trying to provide a substantial upgrade to the whole landscape that's on both streets around the site. And as you look closer at what happens, this is what we call the ground level plan that tied to that landscape plan I just mentioned. So you can see here in the sort of salmon-colored pink, that these are the retail tenants that occupy the frontage along Granite Ave. These are going to be smaller retails components. These are not intended to be large, and they're intended to be probably geared towards more town-related amenities. We're not anticipating to, to providing cafes, restaurants, high-traffic areas. These are really tended to be more town amenity, commercial-type developments. You will also see that the residential entrance occurs as well along Granite Ave to provide additional life and elements of pedestrian movement through the street. And then as we continue to move towards the back of the site, this shows how the parking system works. Essentially, as you come in, this system is a series of parking stacker systems. It's fully automated. And as you can see, we can, we can provide up to 38 parking spaces with a ability to fully, be fully electric within a very, very small footprint. In addition to that, we have some additional surface spaces for both van access and handicap parking. And so this area really emphasizes the importance of also additional bike storage that Robert has just circled, and there are additional bike storage in the basement as well. So I think this is the, a very compact, very efficient footprint with respect to the ground plane and trying to activate in particular Granite Ave with, with life and activity along the streets. As you look at a typical floor plan, for example, this shows in gray tone the ability to have units. This is a 33-unit development. Again, these are going to be condominium market rate units, but they, a certain number that are affordable. And it largely consists of one-bedroom and two-bedroom units. So again, it's really geared towards empty nesters in terms of their size and in terms of the sub approach. You can also see as you move towards the back, we have a green roof there. This is what's kind of covered portion of that parking space that we, we talked about earlier, which will be there for coverage and a lot for dealing with service runoff, as well as providing softening of the edge along the, the street. And the building mass here really does look to basically bulk the mass up to Granite Ave and step it down as it moves back towards Mechanic at the rear. And these nice images are really views. This is taken from the expression, looking back towards the project here. You can see how the activation along the building edge, we attempted to really try to scale this in order to break the massing down into almost reading as three elements, which are subdivided with the darker gray vertical plane in between. This allows us to create a scale break as well as to reduce the massing. We're also reducing the fifth floor, they're pulling back along the corners. And of course, the ground floor will be entirely activated with the retail and the residential entrance as it moves along the street. As you look closer along Granite Ave yourself, this is taking along the streetscape at the corner of Granite Ave, Mechanic Street. And here you can start to see how, again, the building frames itself with respect to the street. We We provide a couple of things that we want to point out besides the retail activity on the ground plane. As you look at the mass details and we'll talk about in a minute, the intent is not only to break the scale, but also use high quality materials around. We're proposing a very high quality brick, which is, which is being circled here in a light tan, light gray color, which we believe will weather also well, given the location and the darker gray panels which occur in between. We're also introducing the ability to create some variation both in the window pattern as well as in some color opportunities to further differentiate and break the scale down and also make it feel more residential nature as we begin to evolve the design and refine the details. This is a view taken from Mechanic Street, looking back towards the project. And again, what you want to point out is that, as you said, we really push the bulk of the massing furthest away from this particular side and bulking it up towards Granite. And furthermore, at the fifth floor itself, we've further setting back that level to further reduce the scale of the project. You can see also elements of, you know, projecting balconies and other things which are going to add a residential scale. And then as we look at the lower levels, you can see how we have on the second level, the green roofscape. This is basically residential, small terraces, and then a further lower area that's covering the parking below, which also deal with surface runoff to provide a scaling down approach to the overall massing. And again, variation in order to try to make it really be respectful as we can to the community. And this is now a much more closer view at the corner of Mechanic Granite. I think what we really want to emphasize here is the importance of activating the streetscape to not only tie, provide opportunities for the small retail tenants and residential lobby. But you can see that we're really trying to propose a high quality environment, both in terms of the treatment of the paving materials, the brick that we described previously, the introduction to planting and landscape feature elements of the streets in the corner, and also looking at high quality materials to really activate the ground plane as one moves around the project and trying to open up the site as much as we're able to in terms of this ability to activate its use. This is a lucid sketch view, but this is taken more towards the residential part. And again, we're attempting to create a very high quality entrance leading into the residential. It'll have a small discreet canopy, providing sort of a defining characteristics to lead you into the entrance. And then like on either side, you can see a fair degree of transparency in glass to open up the activities to see both into the residential lobby and into the retail components along the streetscape. Planting as well as the corners. In terms of the material, this is, this is what we call a kind of a partial three dimensional piece of the building. So again, along the front, what we're proposing is a high quality when you're brick, which basically aligns all those elements that we just looked at previously in those renderings. And within that, we have a series of elements that includes both a frame, a precast frame that surrounds the windows. The windows also have variegated details in terms of both the brick coursing, colorways, variegation of window types. Further way that we allow the emphasis of the units to have a different window treatment to provide some interest and visual variation. As we look at the other elements, the fiber cement both occurs in the niche with the dark gray on the far left, allowing us to break the scale of the building down. And then on the right, we're also proposing fibrous man panel as well, cladding the other parts of the building. And we are, we are proposing a very high quality dense fiber cement panel. This is not intended to be an expensive product. We're going for a very high level on the fibers and panel. So we're really looking at high quality materials throughout this project. Again, in part of the, the need to really look at a very sustainable, but also a project that we would want to be proud of and that will withstand the test of time and hold up well in this environment. Here you can see a little bit more ground level detail. We really believe in the importance at the ground level that even areas which do not have windows that we're using high quality materials and variegation in the tend to propose brick and also the brick will have detailing such as you can see on the image on the right. So it isn't just simply flat brick, but there will be relief shadow elements in scale. So we, we really believe that pedestrian experience moving around the building is very important and we want to emphasize the fact that we are trying to use very high quality materials and enhance the streetscape throughout as we move around the project. So I think this comes to the last, now we have maybe one more view. So this is again was pointing towards the overall project as we, as we believe and to restate that we're looking to develop a, a mixed use development, thirty three condominium residences geared towards empty nesters with very high quality projects in terms of the materials and trying to make the scale of the building really push as much as possible Granite Avenue and do the bulk of the massing in that location and scale it back towards the, the rear and mechanic street. Closing shot, I'll come in again, emphasizing the importance of the streetscape at ground level. So I think that's the last, I believe, is that correct, Rob? Okay, so that's the last of the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so thank you for your update. Did, did my fellow planning board members have any questions or comments? Or are you ready to hear from the citizens who might like to provide any feedback?
Just a question, we received peer review reports on stormwater and traffic, and then we also received responses to those. Just wanted to ask you if we're going to discuss those so that the members of the public who are watching also have benefit of what we received and those reports.
Are you asking Marion?
No, I was, I was going to ask us. We, I think we need to mention the fact that we've gotten these other materials.
Okay.
Before we hear from the public.
Yeah, I, I just thought that maybe someone should give an overview of what's in those reports. And I don't know if that would be Marion, Allison, or you, but it's, I think it's important information. I know there are a lot of, I'm sure there are a lot of questions about traffic and parking. And the peer review did go back and forth on that. And I think it's, it might be helpful for those who are watching to have the benefit of that expert input.
Okay, I'd be happy to hear from Marion on that if she would like to speak to that. I did not prepare.
You'll have to give me a minute because I have to go find my copy of the responses. But maybe someone else from the architectural firm wants to comment. Or I mean, I have got some in front of, in front of me. We had this, so we have this, the niche review follow up we just got that, that Tim had posted. That we got that, so that posted, so niche engineering was the peer reviewer for the town on the stormwater. And there were some points raised in that letter, I mean, in the initial, in the initial report by niche. And, and they've now sort of, you know, they've responded to whatever changes have been proposed by the applicant. So I, you know, I don't know whether we should sort of read that into the record or Allison, you know, staff wants to do that, but.
It's an awfully long report. I was thinking maybe we could post the reports, you know, on a public website.
Well, yeah, Danny, I appreciate that and I agree that it is a long report. But I do think that it's important to let the public know that we've gotten responses from our peer reviewer. The applicant has addressed those concerns from the peer reviewer. And the, and the completion of the letter is that from niche engineering is to say that they have closed out and satisfactorily resolved the comments that they had been made and then direct the members of the public to see that letter. But I just think it's important for everyone to know that, you know, our peer reviewer raised some issues and the applicant addressed them and that now those issues have been satisfactory resolved. And Tim's message to us says that the, you know, town engineer has reviewed it as well and hasn't put anything in writing, but has verbally agreed with niche's, you know, conclusions on that. Yeah, and actually I'd like to add to that, that the town engineer did, did give us a letter very late this afternoon saying exactly what you just said, that she agrees with the comments that they've been resolved. There are several issues that were discussed during the, that relate to engineering that if this project gets finally approved, will need to be dealt with. I think there's an easement issue for a drain line and that kind of thing. So she mentions those in her letter. But we did get her final letter, so everybody has signed off on the drainage and engineering review.
Yeah, and I think the traffic peer review, well, so the initial traffic report was done by VHB, the peer review by Beta and a response by VHB. And I read through those again today and I think it's, it's, there's a lot of important information there. And, and maybe in, depending upon the comment, the detail of the comments that we hear, that it would be beneficial to have VHB come to our next meeting and speak to their, their initial, their initial report, the beta comments, and then their response to those comments. Because I, I think that there's a lot of interest in that topic. And I don't know that we are the experts to explain it. I think that the engineers are the best ones to do that.
Yeah, I agree with Cheryl. I'm sorry, didn't mean to try to interrupt. Your last comment, I agree with it. Just in just a time, maybe we, I don't think this is going to close today. And so maybe then we can like, like put in some time for Tim or Allison or somebody to give us some high level overview. And if we want somebody else like Cheryl mentioned to come in and give more of a, an answer, maybe we do that just so we can put that off to the next meeting.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. Thank you for bringing those topics up, Kathleen and Cheryl. Okay, the East Milton Neighborhood Association asked if they could show some slides and, and talk about some of the feedback that they've been receiving. Could we bring Steve Ryan's into the room? Hi, Steve.
Danny, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Steve, before we begin. I see that we have quite a number of participants. And sometimes when we have that number, we like to put a, a timeframe to each one of the people commenting. So everyone has opportunity to comment. So I don't know if you want to ask initially for a time limit or if you'd like to ask people to give an idea of whether they would like to speak, so we can get an idea of how many would like to. So like by maybe just a raising of hands, so we can see whether we need to set some kind of a time limit.
Okay. Sure, I'm happy to do that. Would the particip, with the people who are interested in speaking at some point on this topic be comfortable raising their hand just so we can gauge how many, how many people would like to speak on this topic tonight? Okay, all right, so I'm counting roughly six. We might end up with more, five, roughly, roughly six. So I think Mr. Ryan's reached out in advance. He has a few slides to show us, so I'd like to give him, say, ten minutes. And then when we turn it to the public, I, I'd like to say if the public wouldn't mind aiming for three to four minutes. Of course, we're not going to cut you off hard if you have a lot of interesting factors. But, you know, just, just to keep the meeting flowing. So at this point, I would love to hear from Mr. Ryan's. And before I do so, I think, Mr. Ryan, you may belong to the Milton Neighborhood Coalition. I'm a member of that, so I just wanted to do a twenty three B three disclosure that I belong to the same association that Steve Ryan's does. I don't think we've met since the pandemic, so. But pursuant to guidance from the State Ethics Commission, I feel that I can be fair and objective carrying out my official duties as a planning board member on this topic. So, thank you.
My pleasure. Thanks for the time. I'll try to keep it to ten minutes or less. Also, we'll be speaking on some of our information will be Jim Coyle. I think if Jim could come off mute, that would be great. If it's okay, I'll share my screen.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. For the background there. Yeah. On Zoom all day, just like the rest of us. So my name is Stephen Ryan. I live at forty six Belger Circle, Muscle Town Meeting Member, precinct seven, and a board member of the East Milton Neighborhood Association, which we're very proud to say have over five hundred members currently today. The slides we're going to, we're going to show you today, and they're, they're few and we'll be brief in our remarks, really articulate the feedback that we're hearing from the butter residents in East Milton near this particular project. So what we've heard from our neighbors and you've articulated some of the points, and I do have questions around the engineering studies, because we are hearing lots of feedback around wrong way traffic on Mechanic Street, parking abuse, and we all see a lot of that as it spills over from the square already. I know many times our street built a circle, Church Street, Church Place are always overflow as well. So we, we're all very much aware that there is a dramatic shortage of parking in, in Milton in general. And also some of the feedback we're hearing from the folks that are part of our membership are the projects they're feeling are really driven from the developer. You know, we do appreciate that there's some really, you know, great opportunities for development in there in the neighborhoods and in Milton in general. I don't think anyone's saying that they don't want any development. I think what they're looking for is responsible development. They really support and, and it really builds upon the feedback from the neighbors. You know, you're aware of the, you know, I heard earlier and I wrote this down, the feedback around the project, it's a difficult site. It's dirty, it's noisy, and it's a real challenge to build on and get approval. And there's many, many approvals that are going to be required as you go forward to the ZBA, et cetera. So, and it's also what some of our folks are saying that too, that Brandon Avenue is heavy traffic. Anybody who's driven down there knows that if you, you're driving down there on any given day, you're, you're definitely planning to find a cut through. And unfortunately, many of our neighbors are dealing with this every day with people driving the wrong way down the street. Also heard earlier about an engineering study, some of the neighbors are reporting out that there was an auto repair garage. And so they have concerns about, you know, things like environmental concerns. Has there been a study about this? Have we reviewed any of the, any of the cleanup that's ever been done there? Has it been done there? And, you know, also is many cases in the roads in Massachusetts in general, our roads are narrow and these have never been widened. If you look to our neighbor Quincy, many of the things they do in their city, right, we're a town. But the things that they do are, are right, they're building. They are making sure that there is clear drive through access for UPS, Uber, FedEx, movie vans. When I look at the drawings that were shown tonight by Fango Alexander, I see the parking and unloading for UPS, et cetera, in the front of the building where there is. It's already a narrow road, so you're going to increase traffic there, folks getting out there as well. Also, looking at some of the projects we've seen brought before the planning board and a select board, you know, being able to get an ambulance or police vehicles in and out of there, this is a real concern for many folks that live in this area. I mean, when you look at some of the projects that are on the docket now, and, you know, they're one of the residents that's being judged, there's not even enough room for an ambulance to come in or turn around and get out. This is a real issue. You know, when you look at Quincy, some of the best practices that they have there is they require a hundred percent off street parking for guest spots in their buildings. I mean, essentially what they're doing is when they're designing their buildings, it will park itself. They're not relying on, you know, parking in someone's parking lot because it's off hours. If they're not relying on parking in a church parking lot or a bank parking lot or overflow into the neighborhoods, they're billing with a purpose. They also have looked at multiple projects recently with stackable parking and they've denied this. They've looked at it for many issues and I would really encourage the planning board to look closely at this and why they're pushing back on that. They're citing some very specific, specific issues which we think you should take a look at. And then also setbacks, right? Looking at garage design, twenty foot full car garage length, back off the sidewalk. These are real concerns that our membership and our neighbors, all amazing people, are giving it to the East Milton Neighborhood Association. Jim?
Hey. We're going to introduce a new concept here called the Microzone, which is a small section of any town or city where you create mixed use, view, views, rules. And we're, we're really basing this on the Barrett Report on page number
Twenty one.
Twenty one has a very good example. Twenty-one has a very good example of of building blocks. And a parking garage was proposed and a lot of green space in there. And we're concerned about the overall trend that this project gets approved.
Yeah.
We're gonna lose all that. Uh, okay, here's the slide I was talking about here. It has a well-defined building blocks, a parking garage.
Excuse me, would Sue on you please turn off her phone, please mute the um, her laptop? Thank you. Carry on, please.
And then there's a a parking garage in here, and one defined is another one defined for the to the north of that. But we're talking about between Granite and Mechanic and Adam Street right now. There's Park at Parks was one of the concepts. Um, our approach here is is a looking at this project, David, we need we need to look at the entire triangle of the. What's gonna happen there. And by starting probably with the most difficult uh, space in that one. Is that that we believe there's better ways of doing it. What we're proposing is a microzone here on the top. Um. With a with a parking garage affiliated with it, and it and. So that each property, including four forty here, basically let's provide a public parking garage. And no parking in the project other than a little bit for visitors and emergency vehicles. And that will help satisfy one that we, I believe in that case, the building can be reduced in height. By eliminating the getting the number of floors down, and that's one of the things that the residents of East Milton, in particular, the Mechanics Street. Are looking forward to happen, and it's not happened yet. So, um, so the idea is use a microzone. And um, as as another way of looking at the project here, which would have its own set of rules to. And instead of looking at an overlay district, which has been kicked around for several years now by the planning board. Um, I um, we'd like to work with the developer. And come up with a better way of doing it that gets done faster. And it may be to take out a lot of the agony going through the zoning board and the planning board. You've talked about spending a whole year. I think we need a lot more time with the people in the neighborhood first. And we can come up with a a better overall result for this triangle of streets here and and. And follow the Barrett Report, what's shown there.
Awesome.
Uh, next.
Thanks, Jim. So, you know, Jim touched on one of the big, one of the big topics as well as the height of the building. Looking at, if you look at to the from the ground level to the top of the building, uh, you know, looking at a very tall building. Certainly one of the tallest building in Milton or East Milton for sure. Here's some examples, you know, some from the Barrett Report, but some that. There's some feedback from the neighbors that they feel will work. So if you look at Central Avenue, right, this this project fits in that space. It's ground floor retail seventeen apartments um, on three floors, including a dormer on the roof, but it's mixed use. It does, it really fits into the neighborhood and residential aesthetic. If you look at the Elliot Physical Therapy Building, which this one hasn't been go up not too long ago. This looks like many of the houses that are in the region. It does, it it fits in, it uh, it provides some additional parking for the building. Uh, and this this actually image was provided to us from a resident of Mechanic Street, um, and they suggested that we we reference this for your review as well. Um, now, this one was sourced in the Barrett Report. The the reason why we like this one, this is what we think this is derived to the other projects that are being reviewed today. Um, is that this one, this site now pushes the height of the building, and it takes into account the terrain change from the building. So if you were the wealthy world, say this is the north side of building, and it could be a different orientation, but say it's a north orientation. It's taken that into account, so it's not pushing all the height down onto the neighbors in this case, right? And it's got proper access to the garage on the lower level here, and this again, this building is four stories versus the, you know, the building that is being. Uh, considered today. Um, now, if you're looking for a comparison, this project here, this is a parking garage, Hancock Parking Garage, seven hundred fifteen. Space is total. This is in Quincy. For anyone who's gone to sixty-one C, um, or to any of the restaurants over the fours. You've probably used this parking lot. This few points of this is to look at the height of this building here, where you've got. Essentially, one, two, three, four stories as opposed to what's being proposed today. However, this type of building fits this site. It's got great outdoor usage in the fall, excuse me, in the winter. It they have outdoor festivals for winters, they have landscaping here. The project we have now has room to get better, right? There is an opportunity to make it fit better into the community by reducing the overall height, dropping it down from six stories. Um, and making it a more parking-friendly building for East Milton and Milton in general. Um, and in closing, I've heard this tossed around quite a bit, this is a gateway, but this is an opportunity for the planning board to do this right. Let's define a gateway to our town that makes sense, sense for everyone that lives in Milton, um, not just from a developer's perspective. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ryan's. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Coin. Thank you. Um, okay, um, Allison, could you help me? Um, I see uh, some people do have their hands raised. Um, let's see, um.
So we have Marion, did you want to speak or is your hand raised from before?
That must be from long ago when we were trying to make me a participant or something.
Okay.
I will do lower hand.
So we have Elaine Benson next.
Excellent. Ms. Benson, you are up when you are ready to unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes. And could you give us your address?
Sure. So sixty-seven Granite Place, East Milton. Um, so yeah, I'm a resident of East Milton. I'm a town meeting member. And precinct seven and was on the East Milton Working Group. I'd like to offer my support for this project. Um, our community has struggled to induce healthy, diverse development, um, meet our affordable housing needs and grow our commercial tax base. Which are all areas highlighted um, as opportunities and the extensive work that was performed by the Barrett Planning Group. I think this project adds much-needed diverse housing stock, um, such as for young families and downsizing retirees. Um, provides opportunities for increased commercial revenue with grade A commerce at street level. Has an efficient parking solution to not tax the surrounding neighborhoods and adds much-needed affordable housing. Um, albeit, albeit, I mean, um, three units, but still. In addition, um, the fifth story being set back with the height along the highway, um, seems an appropriate compromise in making the project financially feasible. I um, would like to suggest to uh, make a suggestion for a Mansard-style roof, similar to the Hendry's project. And possibly a less harsh color such as red, which I believe would help with the aesthetic appeal and um, the neighborhood congruity. East Milton, I think, is long overdue for strategic development, modernization, and increasing our commercial tax base. I feel some of the feedback that's been given is a bit egregious. We can't push back against every development here in Milton, because it's gonna happen. Um, and in my opinion, four forty granite will bring an improvement to East Milton, is consistent with the goals of our master plan and those outlined in the Barrett Report. And I'd like to urge the planning board um, to approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Benson. Thank you. Do we have um, um, Ms. Well, Bettina.
You're. Holly.
Oh, thank you. Welcome back.
So I'm not going to be nearly as eloquent as um, Elaine, and I'm um, a neighbor as well. I'm at seventy-seven Granite Place. I also participated in the East Milton Working Group, um, when it met last fall.
Right.
And I have to admit, um, I've been um, a resident of Milton with with my family here for um, just over five years. So I I can't claim to have been here all that long, but I can um, say that we we live just down the road before this. Um, on Elmwood Avenue, Quincy, and we understand the differences between the city of Quincy and the town of Milton, and we appreciate and respect those. And we simply love living in East Milton, um, and being a part of the neighborhood fabric. Um, but I fully concur with Elaine that I think this is a perfectly appropriate project for that site. And I um, in, you know, reviewing the application and the proposal, see that the developers are. Um, doing their level best to work with a very difficult situation. It's um, it's not an easy site. For um, them to build on, uh, especially with the highway noise in the particular parcel, and that um, it will require going through the Board of Appeals. Um, so I I guess I just want to commend the effort and say that as a neighbor who's looking for. Um, examples of this this kind of thoughtful, responsive design. This is what I'm seeing here. It seems iterative, and I can tell that you'd like to continue working with um, the members of the East Milton Neighborhood Association. And the planning board, so um, I I just, I wanted to express my support, and then I feel comfortable with this project. Um, I appreciate the sustainability, um, the ground level retail. I'm not worried too much about the traffic um, impact or the height. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us tonight. Okay, um, Carolina Erlarte, please forgive me, I'm on the pronunciation, but Carolina, join us.
Hi, um, it's Caroline Brote.
Oh, thank you so much.
I changed my name.
Oh, no, that's great.
I got married.
What's your address?
Thirty-six Lothrop Avenue.
Okay, thank you.
Um. I would like to say that I also agree, and um, I I would like the board to approve the project. Because it's very necessary, needed uh, for the young families and um, people who are trying to move in here. I think uh, it it would be a good thing here. The traffic, yes, of course, it's a concern uh, that we all do have. Um, but the parking that the way they are doing and that it's not going to be such a big increase. Um, looks like it's automatic and the way they represent it, I think that um, that's very helpful. That they will not, the owners will not be parking on the streets. Um, I, yeah, my, I would say yes, I think it's needed, it's necessary. Uh, we do need to have more uh, apartments and condominiums here in Milton.
Well, thank you so much. Okay, well, thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Farone, Janet Farone.
Hi, uh, this is Janet Farone. I'm at seventy-one Central Avenue, not in the neighborhood. But I had to chime in about the irony of having the Central Ave Development. Um, thirty-six Central put up as a a model and how it fit the neighborhood. Because um, I my doorbell was ringing with all the people uh, against it, getting us to, you know, wanting us to sign petitions. So I I'm just here laughing that now um, it's, you know, being shown as a as a perfect model. Um, I've been in Milton, I think sixteen years, and I don't think I've ever seen a development that didn't have a big backlash. So I'm uh, definitely in support of it. I think um, Elaine Benson really was eloquent and the the people after her. So um, I agree for those same reasons. And I really, um, I, you know, parking is always brought up. This may not be the place, but I'm in East Milton Square all the time and was so horrified with. The parking spaces that were taken away in front of uh, Bruegers and the Fitness Unlimited. To put that monstrosity of a light pole in. So I don't know how that went through, but um, if people want to talk about parking, uh, that to me is is the most bizarre thing I have seen. And I also, um, I love the look of the building, and I think it um, would look beautiful there without um, changes. So I'll end there. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. Uh, thank you for joining us tonight. Okay, um, I see uh, Mr. D'Amato, Andrew D'Amato. Mr. D'Amato, would you like to join us?
Yeah, there I am.
Oh, there you are. Good evening.
Yeah, I want to thank the developers for uh, the presentation, and um, I am a member of the East Milton Neighborhood Association. And I also was on the staring committee uh, with Judith Barrett. Uh, which then got its name changed. I forget what it was officially called. Um, you know, there there are a few issues I have, and one of them is parking, and of course, parking is the big issue around East Milton. I live on Pear Street, by the way, which is uh, right there. Uh, we, look at that, I wish I had my camera outside. Because a car just went down my street the wrong way. So this is an ongoing problem in our neighborhoods. Those streets are very narrow, and um, they really can't take much more traffic than what's there. We also have uh, the Dolan Funeral Home, which. Uh, you know, utilizes the streets during big wakes and funerals, and and all the residents here are happy to accommodate them in those times. But it's just one more thing that we have to deal with with this project. I don't think any project in town should get any relief on parking. I believe they should be able to uh, you know, take care of their own parking, even if we were to assume that this. Automated parking uh, garage uh, thing uh, wa- was to work uh, workout. Um, there are some big questions about its reliability and its safety, and I think the board really needs to take a look at that before we. Uh, we we say that's an inadequate um, solution. Uh, also, you know, there's three resident, I mean, three commercial spaces, you know, which look like over three thousand square feet. And if I'm not mistaken, that it's two hundred fifty square feet uh, for one parking space, which would call for twelve. Spaces, pl- twelve to fifteen spaces, which is not allowed. The, you know, they don't have it. So, you know, I get what Elaine Benson was saying, and I and 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 Carolina, that, you know, these. We do need diversification, but it has to be done right, and it has to be done in a way that's sustainable. And this is also going to be a, uh, you know, an example going forward for other developments. So we really have to take our time. I mean, both Caroline and Elaine said something that just hit with me, and they said, well, this is good for young families. Now, you know, that goes sort of goes against what Elaine was saying about, you know, the the revenue that this we're supposed to be getting from this. Because if, you know, I don't know, how many three bedrooms are in this complex and how many two bedrooms? Do we know that hopefully?
Um, Marion, there are, there are no three bedrooms. It's mostly two bedrooms. There are a few single bedroom units.
How many is mostly married?
Thirty.
Three, one bedroom, and thirty-two bedroom, and no three bedroom. It is designed for empty nesters or or young couples. You know, you know.
Yeah, if you think somebody from South Boston is moving with a, you know, young seven-year-old won't move into a place. That's a two-bedroom and and maybe, you know, over fourteen hundred square feet, I think that's a real possibility. Since you can't say there are no no children, if we get ten children in there at close to twenty thousand dollars a year to go to school, that alone.
Can I just interrupt you with that, please? That's illegal.
I know it is.
The discussion of housing and children is illegal to talk about.
I understand that totally.
Housing violation.
Yes, I totally understand that, and that's what, that's my point. You're making my point. It's illegal, so they can move in. And we could have up, we could have children living in that building. I don't understand why every time a developer builds a building. They simply state, well, this is for empty nesters and retirees, and there will be no children. But there might be, and let's say, you know, an elderly couple moves from Milton. Would into this unit, who's gonna move into their, you know, three-bedroom house? A young family, so that's going to affect the town. I mean, you could scratch your head all you want, but this is fact.
I'm not scratching my head, Mr. D'Amato.
Kathleen, we need to have a non-hostile environment. We need to allow the public to speak.
Shaking your head at me like it's gonna fall off is not very.
No, no, I'm just trying to point out that.
Okay, well, let's let the citizen speak, and then you'll have your turn to speak. Let's let's.
I apologize, Ms. Swenson, but I don't want us to get sued for fair housing violations.
Okay, he's talking about the town resources and how much it costs and.
Yeah, I'm not saying you can't, not saying, you're making my point, Kathleen, in saying that you can't prohibit children from moving in. So why do developers always say, well, it's probably not going to have any children? When, you know, a, a almost fifteen hundred square foot apartment with two bedrooms is certainly accommodable for children. And I think that's something we have to look at. And, and if you're going to tout that, you know, this is, is such a financial tax gain, then we have to look at to, to the offset. And that's one of the offsets. And nobody ever talks about, you know, the other burdens that all these buildings will, will cause the, you know, the taxpayers. It's going to have to have fire department inspections, police are going to, you know, this is all part of it. I mean, you know, I don't think the tax benefit's a big deal. It, it comes to like thirty-two, even if we were to assume three hundred thousand, I think it comes to like under thirty-two dollars of, of a household in Milton. And that's just going to the general fund. So that's not coming off your tax bill.
Danny, I, I'd like to curtail this aspect of the discussion that I think Kathleen alluded to. I think we started on this later point and I think we shouldn't focus, that's not our role is to
Sure.
focus on that. So I would just like to make sure.
Without bringing up the other end of the show. I mean, if, if the developer is going to tout that this is a great tax benefit, why can't someone say it's not a great tax benefit?
You've made your point, Ms. D'Amato.
I'm happy to move on.
Sorry, I'm, I'm just curious. Mr. Moore, and, and this might be helpful a, a little bit, how many families live in thirty-six Central?
So, Michael Moore here. So we've had one child live in this thirty-six Central since we built the building. No children living here now.
Well, I actually knew two children that lived there. So I don't know where we're getting.
Okay, well, maybe, maybe there was two.
Well, I mean, those are two I knew. They worked for my wife.
I, I don't mean to perpetuate the interruption, Danny, but if you, I just wanted to throw my two cents in here. I mean, it's not falling on deaf ears when I think Mr. D'Amato is trying to get to. He sent, because I think there is a point that there is a, a three hundred thousand dollar benefit to the town. I think, I mean, I don't want to speak for you, Andy, but it sounds like what you're saying is, but there's also some negatives that come out of there. And so I don't think there's any violations here. I mean, none of us on this call are the town lawyers, so I'm not too worried about these conversations. I just, I, I'm not, I'm not trying to be nasty. I just think we should all just let them have their three to four minutes and then we'll get through it. I, I, I don't see any problem with what's, what's being said here.
Okay, well, let's move to the next point. Um, thank you, Mr. D'Amato. Did, did you have any further points to make?
Well, I did, but I've taken up enough time. I let it to someone else. If there's more time later, I'd love to speak, but thank you.
Okay, thank you for, thank you for coming out tonight. Mr. Tony Flanagan, would you like to join our conversation?
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, hi, Mr. Flanagan.
Thanks for having me. I, I wasn't prepared to speak, so this probably isn't going to be in any order organized as I hoped it would be.
Okay, you give us your address if you don't mind.
On thirty-six Wood Street, East Milton.
Thank you.
So just addressing some of the issues that have come up, people refer to this as a gateway building, which is that even a thing? I don't understand why Milton wants or would need a gateway building. I mean, Milton, East Milton Square is a wonderful neighborhood. It's why we live here, why we moved here. And it didn't have a gateway building. I, I don't know that that's even a thing that's desired. People talk about needed commercial space in East Milton Square, which I, I'm not quite sure that, most of the things I hear in East Milton Square from the businesses that exist here now are that there aren't enough parking spaces to begin with. And so I don't know that adding more businesses is really something that East Milton necessarily needs, especially in a building that's going to bring in so many more cars and so much more traffic, which is already an issue here in East Milton. We definitely need affordable housing. I think we can all agree on that. But I don't think that means that we need to force it into a place where it, it doesn't belong. People have said, because of traffic, certainly. A lot of people have said tonight that this isn't an easy site to develop. And I think that's, that's for a reason, because maybe it, it doesn't really belong here. Again, I feel like we're forcing all the affordable housing to be in what's already the most congested part of Milton, traffic-wise and parking-wise. And I know we, we always bring up traffic and parking, but it's something we deal with every day, especially living here in East Milton Square. And I feel like the parking concerns with some of the other people have spoken are just sort of being glossed over like, oh, I'm not worried about them. That's great. I mean, I live here in East Milton Square and I don't worry about them, but I, we, we all definitely deal with them every day, both parking and traffic. It's already an issue. I don't think we can say that we're going to add a whole bunch more people in a tiny area and it's not going to affect it. I, I, I feel like we need to be honest. That's about all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Flanagan. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, we have Mr. Coyle who would like to speak again, but I just wanted to do a call out. Is there anyone else who would like to speak for the first time? Before I have Mr. Coyle speak for a second time. Okay, we have someone named Amy. Amy, if you could give us your first last name and address, you're welcome to join our conversation. Amy, are you able to come and join us? Have you unmuted?
Danny, she's unmuted.
But I can't hear her and I don't see her video. Okay. Is cable access able to see any issue? I'm not sure what we can do for poor Amy trying to join us. Okay. Okay, um, I, I guess Amy did not want to join us after all because she's muted and, all right, so we will turn to Mr. Coyle. Did you want to speak one more time?
Yes.
Or was your hand up? Okay.
No, I do. I just wanted to go back to one point about the parking situation right now.
Okay.
There's, for point of information, there are half a dozen businesses along Adam Street that are sharing the tiny parking lot behind Abbey Park, which is already a bone of contention on other project being proposed. And the, the Barrett Report rightly so proposes two parking garages in East Milton Square right now. One of them is on the corner of Basset and, and Granite. And another one is, is right just north of the project we're talking about now there. Those could provide each one maybe us even a three-level garage, eighty to a hundred spaces there to get rid of the congestion. We have huge problems in here about there's no unloading zone for, the businesses are already there. We have tractor trailer rigs parking in the, right on Avastree, blocking all the traffic. The planning, the, the planning department needs to work with the planning board to solve all these problems simultaneously. I would hate to do one project in the most, a tiny triangle, less than a half an acre here. I believe in some mistake out. The strategy is wrong. And I think the developer needs to go back to the planning board and look at that triangle of streets there as a whole. That's why we proposed a microzone approach, rather than even thinking about an overlay district, which I think that's something could be done cooperatively together. And we have to address the parking and alleviate, alleviate the, the inordinate amount of traffic. People just park randomly on Mechanic Street and also on, on Pear Street. And it's, and other streets north of Adam Street all the time, wherever they want, even in the East Church parking lot without permission. And that's been neglected by this board and by the zoning board. And it's time to fix that, follow the Barrett Report with the parking garages and work on, what I read, the Barrett Report, it says, solve the parking first before any new development. And that's what we need to do.
Thank you, Mr. Coyle. Thank you. We, we have been talking about that and I, I tend to agree with you. We really do have to address parking and the traffic, the safety issues with the loading and unloading zones that you've, that have been coming to us for years. I, I agree with you. This is a longstanding issue. Okay, so we have Nancy and then we have Andy D'Amato. If anybody else wants to speak, please do raise your hand as, as we call, well, I'll call on Nancy because we haven't heard from her yet. So Nancy, I don't see a last name, but please unmute and join us if you would like.
Hi, sorry about that.
That's okay.
Nancy Costello, I live at fifteen Mechanic Street. So we are directly behind this project. I just had a couple of questions. I know at one of the past meetings, someone had requested a shadow study. And I didn't know if that had been done yet because that's really going to affect my home.
Uh, yes, there has been a shadow study that the that the, I think the developer did. So, um, is that available to the public, Allison? Is that whole application online or, or will it be online?
So that the. All of the materials, I believe, are online. You'd have, Julia could answer that better than, than I could.
Okay.
They were.
I know I saw, I saw a shadow study that was submitted with the original application.
Yes.
But I'm more interested in seeing, like, I want a complete shadow study mostly targeting the winter months, because that's really going to affect my home, our heating bills. I mean, the, the five stories from my backyard, you know, we watch the sun over the wind, during the winter and the sun's really low in the sky, lights up the whole first floor of our house. We have skylights on the second floor. So my fear on, you know, honestly, is just that with the building being five stories high, that, that it's going to put a lot of darkness on my home.
Yeah. Yeah, that is a, that is a really big concern. Um, did you, did you send a letter into us or?
I did.
Yes, I did see that letter and I will be reading the letters into the, into the record in a little while. I, I, I did see the, the photographs of your yard and I do see that you have some real plant life there and and that is something of concern.
Yeah, for me individually, I know it really doesn't affect the rest of East Milton Square, but, you know, these questions, it's not so much a backlash that somebody brought up, but you know what? We lived here for thirty years and we're just trying to protect our property. We love East Milton Square. We love our home. So it's not necessarily a backlash. We just need to be careful about the decisions that are being made here. The other point that I wanted to make, I did take a look at the master plan for Milton and one of the number one listed priorities in the master plan was to preserve and enhance the individual character of each of Milton's neighborhoods, including the natural and historic features of each. Now, the building to me, I, I'm hard pressed to figure out what the design of that building is representing for my neighborhood. I, I love Elliot Physical. I love, I love PT Building. It's beautiful. It, it looks like Milton. The building, I, I, I'm not opposed to the project. I'm, I'm opposed to the way it looks and how it's going to represent East Milton Square.
Okay, and, and are you, so you're concerned with the design, the look, are you concerned with the height or looking for mitigation for the, for the sunlight and shadow?
Yep, yep. The five stories right now, if you were in my backyard and I, in my letter, I welcomed you all to take a peek from my backyard. It really is going to encroach on our privacy. You know, we've been trying to plant trees to get ready for this project because we have no idea. We, I don't know if there are going to be balconies off the back of the building. So to me, like a good compromise, go ahead, build it. But you know what? Three stories. I, I, I just don't understand why. I don't know how to say this. So five stories is so that, you know, you guys can all make your profit. I know it's a lot of money. The materials are very expensive, but I just don't feel that that's my burden to bear. I, I, we put a lot of love and TLC into our home, which was built in eighteen forty. And we've preserved the integrity of our home. It looks very much like it did way back when. We have the picture. So I, I'm just asking just, I don't know, just a little bit of respect for how I feel my neighborhood should be represented.
Well, thank you for coming out tonight. Thank you for your contribution to the discussion.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a few more people joining. I'm, I'm going to have Andrew D'Amato come later because we have some new, some new people. Autumn's, Autumn's iPhone. So Autumn, would you like to join and tell us your name and street address, Autumn?
Sure. I, my name's Autumn and I live on Woodward Court in East Milton. I'm just listening to this conversation. I think it's important to reiterate what people are saying about taking time, being careful with the decisions going into this project. My first thought was if I was behind it, literally behind the building, like Nancy is going to be, I would be furious. You know, I would, I would be uncomfortable with, with such a large, tall building being in my back or front yard. So I think it's really important to think about the people who are being affected in that way. I also do not think the building is visually appealing. There were a lot of people who I saw on, on a Facebook page also saying that. I don't know where any of them are right now. But I, you know, I, I personally don't think it is that visually appealing. I think it looks a bit, a bit like a parking garage. You know, maybe thinking more carefully about the colors, the height, the, the material. I'm not sure how sustainable or, or eco-friendly cement buildings are, but I'm sure someone could talk to that. And also being realistic. I, I, I see the picture of people on their laptop and, and reading books outside of the building and, and we have to be mindful. It's right outside of the highway. No one's going to be doing that. So we don't want to, you know, advertise it incorrectly. And what, I think his last name was Coyle and also D'Amato, what they were saying, I think is very important. We, we shouldn't may, maybe be saying that the building will be only for empty nesters and young couples or whatever was mentioned, because we can't necessarily ensure that. And working together slowly is something that seems to be coming up. So that's all I wanted to say.
Well, thank you, Ms. Autumn. Would you mind providing us with your last name for a minute?
Um, it's Ohagie.
Ohagie, okay, thank you. I've ordered card. Okay, well, thank you so much for joining us tonight. Okay, let's, thank you. Have a good night. Okay, um, uh, oh, Su Hong Yu. Su Hong Yu.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, uh, yeah, hi. Uh, so I just like to voice my opinion. So I totally agree with earlier some of the comments about the benefits and, and also the lead, you know, to building high-story buildings. I'm totally agree with that. The concern, the real concern, I live in East Milton, the bigger concern is the location. So there are two aspects of the location. Of course, one is the traffic. So that everybody has, a lot of people have concern about it and me, a very big concern with the traffic. Even right now, I know people can say maybe just add a little bit of traffic. It's really not that case. Now I drive every day off the highway into the highway. That place is very congested every day, even on weekends. And it, it's not like the traffic is okay now. Maybe you add a little bit, it's wouldn't that much. It's just right now, it's already unbearable a lot of times. And also one of the benefits people mentioned is. And also one of the benefits people mention is bring business. Business means attracting more people. That means more traffic. So it's not just the traffic of the people living there. It would be attract other people who gonna go there for whatever the retail business would be. So that would be more than the number of people living there. They're adding the traffic. It was more for the, for the long term, right? You wanted the business to develop. So that would be much more traffic than you would expect it for, for the number of people just live there. So a lot of things, I don't know why, maybe you guys have been already discussed it. I, I, I didn't hear why people wouldn't want, why people wants to live in that location. It's off the highway. There is noise pollution. You said it's building for empty listers and a young couple, maybe young couple, like maybe can leave there for the convenience. But I don't know why people like empty lister would want, how can they enjoy in the time leaving there off the highway with all the noise and also the pollution from the highway? It, it's just, it's just not a good location from many aspects. I, I think the need is there to building apartment, high, high-story apartment buildings. But maybe thinking about a lot of better location. I, I'm sure you guys have some reason. I, I don't know, like first to choose that location. But from my thinking, it's just from many aspects, I just don't think it's a good location for its purpose.
Thank you, thank you. And Ms. Yu, would you be able to provide us with your street address?
Sure. Yeah, three four four Ammon Avenue.
Okay. Well, thank you so much for participating tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Betty Shay. Betty Shay, would you like to join us? Hi, Betty, would you be able to provide us with your street address for the meeting minutes?
Twenty-six Mechanic Street.
Oh, great. Thank you.
And I'll be directly across from the garage entrance. And I have concerns, first of all, about the value of our property. Is that going to go down? Because who would want to live next to that? Traffic is already bad. The, the parking is horrific on the street. People blowing up on ways. I mean, what, it just doesn't, I don't understand how it's going to fit into this neighborhood. I, it's, I'm just totally against. Benny, I accidentally lowered Amy L's hand. So she wants to raise it again. Sorry.
Okay. Did we lose Betty?
Again, it's, it's, I just, I'm just against it because, and maybe it's just personal, but I will be looking at an entrance to a garage across the street from me. And will it change the zoning of the street? That's another question. Will the zoning changed, change?
For, for this particular project, it would just, it would, this, this, they, they would be receiving, you know, if it were to go through all the checks and balances, they would be receiving variances from the zoning board of appeals. So it would just be the site that they are talking about. But I don't know what it would mean to the history. That would be something that the town and the citizens would determine for, for our future, I mean.
Well, I've been here twenty-six years and I just don't see how somebody would be interested in buying my property if they had to look at literally a garage opening. So how is it going to affect our property values?
Right. I think it's a great question. I, I don't have the answers, but I, I, this is a question and comment time. So that's something that we will take into consideration. So thank you very much for participating tonight and coming and joining us. We'll, we'll be having future meetings, so please, please stay tuned.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, so that was Betty Shay. Now, I think we're into rounds of seconds. I'm not sure. So we have, okay, I'll try Amy. Amy L.
I'm going to try again. Can you hear me?
Yes, hello, Amy.
Oh, good. So a new computer. I had a reboot. I apologize. So I wasn't planning on speaking today, but I definitely, one of the, oh, ninety-nine Grafton Avenue in East Milton.
And your last name, please?
Lanane.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, one of the previous speakers I thought made a terrific point about what the benefits are. And when I was looking at the developer's slide, in the very first slide, I was trying to take notes really quickly and I, I didn't really get them down as to what the benefits were for the community of Milton. And I think clearly, I, or when I talk around town, I think most, many people are very concerned about affordable housing. And if I saw from the presentation, we're talking about three affordable housing units. So that's really not going to do a lot to our deficit at this point. So I think that would have been one of the main benefits if we are addressing that problem. So, so I didn't really see that as a benefit because it's not really doing much for affordable housing deficit. And so really, the last point on the Mna slide, I think, was that really most of the benefits that I could see and were really to the developer. So obviously there's, you know, I hate to be blunt, but there's a lot of money to be made here, right? We, we live in a town that's close to Boston that has so many great benefits. And we want to make sure that the people that live in this town are protecting those benefits and are, 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 are building with a really clear vision. This is the first of many projects to come. And there's a lot of overlay zoning coming into place. So I would just say some of the, 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 the things that concern me with most of the presentation tonight is that I don't think traffic, height, density, or parking were addressed in, in the presentation. And I think no matter how many town meetings we've had, those are the four main things that have been brought up as major concerns over the last, probably, you know, you can say one year from this presentation, but I would say it probably goes back five years. So I didn't see those addressed. I'm not fully against the building. I don't see the necessity for a five-story building that does not meet the, the current landscape of the town, I would say. So, and I think, you know, I don't know if Tony's still on, but I love the way that he said gateway. He doesn't understand why this is the gateway building to our town. I did live on Granite Ave when I first owned a house in Milton. And when I was trying to, to pull up the old gateway projects, it was about building an island in the middle of Granite Ave to plant thirty trees. So if you look at Granite Ave leaving East Milton Square and you see some yellow lines there without an island, that's about what I understood as a gateway, where we would have created an island with trees and, and, and potentially set a tone for the gateway Milton. So just an interesting comment. So thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's traffic, height, density, and parking I didn't hear addressed. Well, I think a lot to consider in the next couple of years. And I didn't see affordable housing addressed.
Right, okay. Well, thank you so much for participating, Ms. Lanane. Thank you and stay tuned. We will be having more public hearings on this. Thank you. Okay, let's see. Tiffany York.
Yes, hi. I've heard so many great comments. I'm also a Granite Place resident and just kind of want to go back to our last speaker's comments about a clear vision of kind of the gateway to East Milton. We moved here in two thousand and eight and I feel like it's been kind of a progress from that time, you know, moving forward. But our neighborhood, which is part of East Milton Square, has just become a historic district of the railway village, really celebrating the Granite Railroad, all the artisans, all of the, the workers who lived in this area and built houses. There are many historic houses in East Milton Square. And I, I do have concerns that although all of the materials, which we, you know, which we hear are really high quality, are fantastic, but aesthetically, I do have concerns that if this is going to be the quote gateway building or advertised or poised or put forth as like kind of the gateway into East Milton, that maybe some alternate considerations need to be made for the design. I appreciate the green roof. I appreciate the understanding of trying to break up the, the solid block of it. But I don't really feel like this represents the aesthetic or the history that our neighborhood has built since the eighteen hundreds that we've been here. So that's really all my comments that I just wanted to add.
Well, thank you, Ms. York. Thank you for participating tonight. Stay tuned. Okay, I think we've had, and I'm terrible at this name, but Carolina Elarte? Could you, would you like to-
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Please say your name again and, and the street address. Do you know mine?
I, I changed my name. So I am Caroline Broce. Thirty-sixth Lotford Avenue. I know I'm, I'm that far from, like, not that far, but far enough from the neighbors and their concerns and about the height of the building. I, I'm sure I cannot talk about that. But I, what I wanted to say, that everybody's talking about the parking and that the owners will have their own parking. People need to understand that and the huge concern, it is the height, the traffic and the parking. And it was well represented, at least to me, that the parking, it's not concerned. They will have their automatic parking garages, which everybody's dismissing. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to be like this. Not everybody. But I think so parking, it's not a concern. And the high of the buildings, there are a lot of elastic agents that can help the owners who are afraid that how it's going to increase or decrease their value of the house, which they can get estimates even now for free. So I understand the concerns. I understand the people's fears. But one thing that I wanted to say that I'm still on it, we have a lot of people that want to live in Milton. And we should give them opportunities and young families or old people or it doesn't matter what kind of people. I don't think so. They should be put into categories who's going to live there, which is being brought up too much, in my view. And they should just be able to. We should give them opportunities to live here. And this is what the development people are trying to do, to give a chance to even, even the residents of Milton to move to and downsize. Or people with the families, no families, it doesn't matter. It's just people who would want to live there. And it's, it's up to them. Let them decide. Let them be. Let them live. It's a great town to live in. And we are, we should be welcoming people who wants to be here. And I think it's just that. It's no category of who. It's just people who wants to be here and we should let them, in my view. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you for joining us. Okay, Amy, Amy A.
Hi, I'm Amy Altieri and I live at thirty Hoy Terrace. So not directly affected by this. But I, I would say that I, there are a lot of buildings along Granite Avenue that I'd like to fix up. There's a stretch there that's not very pleasing as you enter Milton. So I'm not opposed to the building in general, but I do, I do feel for Nancy and Betty in terms of, and, and even to Tiffany's point about it being not really in keeping with the historic aesthetic of the neighborhood. I just think that it could be more in keeping with what Milton is. It just doesn't, it doesn't feel like Milton to me when I look at it. And then my only other comment was looking at the site plan and the setbacks, especially on the neighborhood side. It just seems, I know it's a commercial zone and I don't know setbacks in general, but it just seems they have a lot of, they have less of a setback than a normal single-family home. That that building is right up tight against people's sightlines or, yeah, plotlines. So to Nancy's point, like, that's right up, those people are going to be looking right down in her backyard. And that's, that's just not, I think there should be more empathy and consideration of the neighborhood around them when they cite the building in that spot.
Okay, okay. Well, well, thank you, Ms. Altieri. Thank you for joining us. Okay, I'm just checking. I think we have Andy, Mr. D'Amato, Andy D'Amato again. Would you like to speak, Mr. D'Amato?
Yeah, thank you, Benny.
Sure.
I would like to speak. And mainly, you know, I, I think a lot of people in town understand that, you know, in order for the town to get some benefit and some amenities, that the developer needs to make a certain amount of money and, you know, to make it all happen. But I'm, you know, hard pressed to see the benefits of this building at this size versus, you know, the detriments that it is going to cause. Not only this neighborhood, but I believe, you know, it will affect the rest of Milton and especially the square. I mean, one of the big problems I, I see off the bat really is Granite Avenue does get backed up. And that's why so many people come up both Mechanics and Pear Street the wrong way. The residents there are going to also encounter that issue and be stuck in that traffic on Granite to get into their unit. Will probably have to go up Mechanics the wrong way a little bit. I'm sure we're going to see some of that. And, you know, as it's set now, the route they would have to take would be coming down Adams Street to Mechanics to get to the building, which is, you know, a lot of congestion there as well. But my main concern here is I, I'm a little confused about the, the retail spaces. And, you know, those are the so-called benefits or part of them. You know, they said more town-related businesses. I don't understand what that means. In their slides, there was a coffee shop. There was a florist. There was a gift shop. So I, I would like the developers to give us some examples. I know they can't tell us who the tenants are, but they seem to have an idea what type of tenant. So what type of tenant is going to inhabit those three spaces that isn't going to have need for, you know, parking vans? There's only two spots there and that, and that seems to be also for like Uber and, you know, FedEx and Amazon, which, you know, let's face it, you know, that's a constant every day, all the time for an apartment building. I mean, there are, there are delivery trucks on, on, you know, our street constantly and every street constantly because we're so into e-commerce now. So I, I don't see enough, I don't see enough parking for those, those businesses. Not only for customers, but for, you know, people are going to work there. And, you know, I'm afraid they're going to end up on Mechanic Street and/or Pear Street. And also it's a dangerous sort of, it's very dangerous to get out of the car on Granite. I, you know, I've had to do it a few times and, and fortunate enough, I walked the most of those spaces. But you open your door on Granite Ave during rush hour and, you know, good luck. You may not end up with a, a three-door car rather than a four-door car. You know, it just, you know, back to some other people's points, it just doesn't seem like the right spot for a building of this size. And, and I think that's, you know, that's sort of bore out by all the, you know, relief they need, the special permits for five stories, the side setback, parking for businesses, parking for the residents. And, and, and back to that, someone was mentioning that we're, we're discounting the mechanical parking because the mechanical parking, even if that were to be okayed, is still, they're still short of parking. So, you know, I don't know. But I would like some clarification. I don't know if we can have it tonight or they could get back to us on, on actually what, what type of retailer we talking about? And because I think that would have a big effect on the neighborhood. You know, is it going to be the coffee shop, flower shop and gift shop? Or is it going to be an accountant? What, you know, what, what are we talking about?
Okay, I think, I think we can put that- Okay, I think, I think we can put that question on the record and, and I'm hoping to hear back from, I'm, I'm interested as well.
Thank you for your time.
I'm hoping, I'm hoping to hear back from the developer on that in the near future. Um, so we will hopefully have that at least by the next meeting. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for joining us, Mr. D'Amato. Um, okay, I'm just checking to see we have, um, we have one more hand raised. Um, Elaine Benson.
Hi again.
Hi.
So I just wanted just a couple of quick things that were, were brought up, um, after I spoke. So I don't wanna harp on this topic, but um, as someone who years ago was denied viewing an apartment in Milton because I have children, I was pretty offended by that comment. Um, we have a responsibility as a town to provide town services to all residents that move in, including our children. And I personally don't think that it's okay to push back housing, including affordable housing, even though it's only three units. And I think three is better than zero, um, out of fear of the potential for more children. Let's address the schools instead. Um, it's been asked, why would people wanna live in that location? And I imagine that people would wanna live in there, in that location because people need housing. Um, and people, even residents who spoke tonight, do live in that location and, and their concerns are valid and they need to be addressed. Um, but they live in that location near the highway and near the, the pollution that was mentioned. So there are benefits to that area. Um, and there, it's, it's a wonderful town. So, um, there was a lot of talk of parking and loading zones and people going the wrong way down a one-way and those all a hundred percent need to be addressed. Um, but there are many ways to address those issues from enforcement, um, to mechanization. Um, but this one development cannot be held accountable to solve all of the existing issues in the square. Um, and I believe thus far they've been very thoughtful in those regards. Lastly, in my mind, um, gateway meant more of a starting point and then I could be wrong, but that's how, kind of how I saw it, is a good project to begin a period of smart revitalization and modernization in the East Milton Business District, sorry, um, while still protecting our beautiful historic aesthetic. Um, and in that sense, as previously said, I do feel there's some opportunity on the design and color of this building. Um, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us, Ms. Benson. Thank you. Um, and, and I, I do apologize if there was any offense taken. I, I can understand these topics get, you know, people, people bring up all sorts of topics and we just need to get them all on the table and, and talk it all up, all the way around it. And, and I do appreciate your input and your sensitivity to that topic. Um, we, we do welcome every, every child that comes into Milton is welcome into our school system. So thank you for reminding us of that. Um, thank you. Have a nice night. Uh, okay, Mr. Jim Finnegan. Would you like to join us?
Hi. Yes, thank you very much. Uh, I didn't plan on speaking either. My name is Jim Finnegan. I'm town meeting member, precinct seven. Living at seventy-one Emerson Road.
Oh, thank you.
Um, I, I listened tonight, really had no opinion on the project, so to speak. Um, I think the area could do with a bit of improvement and, uh, this certainly provides the opportunity to do that. I don't necessarily agree with the aesthetics of the building and think that it could fit in better with the neighborhood. Um, but I did hear tonight overall from the developer that this is a, a hard parcel to develop. It comes with its own problems and I think there's just too much density there. This relates to the fact that you're probably trying to put ten pounds of whatever it is that you'd like to put in a five-pound bag. Um, you know, I understand that the developers are in a business to make a profit and it's nice that they return some benefits back to the town. Granite Ave basically is pretty much a horror show to drive. It's been like that for years. Um, just something to consider. But if the project weren't so dense, I don't believe that they would be encroaching on other people's properties, uh, such as Mrs. Costello's, uh, you know, and that needs to be considered. Um, along with the fact that if this is going to be a gateway building, um, despite my, my opinion that it's not very appealing, um, the rest of Granite Ave on that side is also ripe for development. And if I consider this to be the gateway building, then I really think that Granite Ave on one side is going to look just like Quincy Square as you start to drive through Hancock Street from Granite Street. And that's something to be considered when the fire station is no longer viable because it's next to St. Agathus. And the two or three buildings next to the entrance, the Dunkin' Donuts get sold. And that's gonna happen. It's just gonna be a reality. And then you're just gonna have one big gateway wall all the way into East Milton Square. I'd like to see the project smaller and a little bit more appealing. Uh, and a little bit less, um, upfront to all of the three sides of the project's lots. But, um, I do agree that something is definitely better than nothing with the mismatch of buildings and everything that we have there. Uh, it's just my opinion. Uh, you know, I, I realize that the developer brings a lot of improvements. There is room for affordable housing. Um, the parking situation itself, I think that they need to address in a better manner. And I'm getting to the point where actually, I guess I am an empty nester and I would just send my, my child off to college. And I'll be honest with you, me and my wife each own a car. So if you have thirty apartments and let's say that most of the apartments go to the empty nesters, that's sixty cars. And so, you know, that's something to be considered too. So I, I just, I just wanted to express my opinion. I thank everybody for listening and, uh, just have a good night.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Finnegan. Thank you for participating. Okay, um, Suzanne Brown. Suzanne Brown, would you like to join us?
Yeah, ringy girl.
Does Suzanne Brown wanna join us? Okay, you can unmute. Um, all right, uh, Mr. Flanagan, Tony Flanagan.
Hello, thanks for having me again. I'll try to be brief.
Oh, that's great, all right.
Uh, I just wanted to clarify that, um, I don't know if anybody's, uh, saying that they're against affordable housing. I'm certainly not against affordable housing. I'm against a monstrous building overwhelming what's a very nice neighborhood right now. Let's make the building smaller. Let's make it all affordable. Uh, anybody having a problem with that? Uh, that, that's all I have. Thanks.
Oh, thank you so much. Thank you for joining us. Okay, let's see. I'll do my last call to see if there's anyone else who would like to speak tonight. Allison, are you seeing any hands? I am seeing one last, um, okay, Autumn.
No.
Oh, accidental, huh?
Oh, okay.
Okay, I.
I think Cheryl, Cheryl, oh, I'm sorry, Bernadette.
Bernadette McAvoy, hello. Ms. McAvoy, would you like to join us tonight? Hello, Bernadette, Ms. McAvoy, did you wanna join us tonight? Not sure.
Can you hear?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, it's Suzanne Brown. I live at the corner of five, six, six Adams Street, corner of Church and Adams.
Okay.
Okay, I was on the traffic commission when they were presenting first, like a two-way on mechanic. Okay, I do not think they have enough parking. Okay, with the Milton, like redevelopment took eleven parking spaces away. And now we're doing this and this building has taken, like, I think eleven or twelve parking spaces and said it was for retail, but it's like regular parking, street parking. And it should not be allowed. They do not have a po, they do not have enough parking in this building for the space. I would like it to be scaled down, maybe three floors and enough parking.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your, um, volunteerism in town and for your expertise in participating. Thank you. Have a nice night. Okay, um, all right, I'm seeing Bernadette McAvoy with her hand up. Bernadette, would you like to join us? Bernadette? Oh. Hi Suzanne, um, Bernadette McAvoy, um, can you hear us? Um, it appears as though you're not on mute, so I'm not sure what the problem is here. Um, all right, I will come back to you, Bernadette. Are you there, Bernadette? Hello?
Sorry, um, I had headphones on. I, I probably couldn't hear me. Sorry about that. Um, so I'm Bernadette McAvoy, I'm twenty-four Washington Street. Um, I've spoken before, as you know, but, um, I just wanted to, you know, just, you know, back up what a lot of the, uh, neighbors were saying about the traffic, the congestion that already exists, the, it's like a wild, wild west over, uh, over near Granite Ave with the people driving up and, you know, the one-way street's the wrong way. It's outrageous that that's even a thing. It's a regular thing as, as a matter of fact. And all the parking in front of the, you know, um, the residents' houses on mechanic already, all the people who work at Abbey Park and Novara and the nail salons and the coffee shops are all parking along there all day long. That's affecting their quality of life to begin with. And then it's pushing more and more into all the other neighborhoods, all the way up to Crane Park. I've seen cars sitting there all day. Uh, you know, the Railway Village, as, as we talked about, the Historic Railway Village, which is the neighborhood I live in and grew up in. Um, so it's affecting, um, thi, this, sorry, this, this development's too big. It should not be five stories, same with the Falcone Corcoran building, five stories. Um, it, it's just, um, it's, it's a lot of common sense just being thrown out the window. And I think these comments that we're all making, the fact that we even have to say them out loud is, is kind of ridiculous. Like if they're obvious, it's like stating the obvious. Um, and so I just don't understand why there's shock and horror or surprise or, you know, uh, people acting like they're taking offense when we say these things, you know, the developers or whatever, because it's, uh, ridiculous. Uh, they need to rethink it. They need to go back to the drawing board. They need to, um, you know, just because they want it to happen in the way they wanna happen. They wanna make as much money as they wanna make, doesn't mean it's right for the neighborhood. It's not fair to the neighborhood. And they really should respect the, the citizens more. Um, it's, uh, just, just so, so people know, the developers may not know, children cannot even walk to, say, Callahan School. They can't even walk through the square safely. Okay, and it's a con, constant construction now with that park in the middle of the square that's happened numerous times. And there's no safe way to walk to school. Um, and then you have just, or St. Agathus or any of the schools in town. It's just, um, a problem to begin with and no, nobody's, uh, going slow through the square. It's all really fast traffic. It's like an extension of the expressway. People just jump on, sorry, jump off the expressway to cut through and we let them. Nobody can walk safely through the square. Forget the elderly trying to walk. Uh, so there's all that going on and people need to realize that's not okay to begin with. And now you're trying to throw this in, two, these two big, you know, ridiculously, um, huge buildings in East Milton Square. I get that, uh, one is thirty-three units, the other's ninety-five, but they're both five stories. I, I don't know. Um, it's affecting the quality of life of the neighbors, people having a potty deck on one and who knows, uh, what else? On, on this one might be having, uh, decks as well overlooking people's houses and, and affecting their quality of life. So, uh, there's a lot to be, um, looked at and, and, and this needs to be put on pause because it's going, you know, there's a lot of people who are missing this. I, I have three kids. We, we have a huge family. We're always running, you know, I mean, besides my own kids, we're always running around to games. So I came in late to the meeting, but everybody, there's a lot of parents, uh, you know, that are missing a lot of this because of different events. So a lot of people concerned, a lot of people maybe not aware as much as people think about what's about to pop up into the square. So people need to, uh, realize and slow this down because the Zoom calls, these Zoom meetings are actually, you know, uh, to the benefit of the developer. They're, they're not to the benefit of anyone else. So a lot of things are being pushed through during this time. It's people are taken advantage of and I think people need to slow down, stop and think and, and throw some common sense into this because it's just not, it's not okay. It's not okay with the neighborhood. I know there's some people for it. I'm not speaking for everybody, but, um, again, no one's against affordable housing, but three, that's not really worth it. Like I'm not trying to say it's not worth it for those three families. I hope, I hope they have affordable housing, don't get me wrong. But, you know, three, they could come up with more than that. Same with the Falcone project. It's, it's kind of, uh, ridiculous, so, you know. Um, the benefits are not, what, you know, the, the negatives are, what do you call it, the, you know, not outweighing, um, they're outweighing the benefits. So anyway, uh, the other big concern in terms of safety is the fire truck, uh, issue. So the, the town has no plans to have a fire truck that's gonna facilitate, uh, the servicing these five-story buildings and that's gonna address. Mr. Coyle has done extensive research and I will say he's amazing for the neighborhood. And the O'Nails have been amazing for the neighborhood, all these wonderful people, uh, spending all their, you know, uh, time to, to do all these things to, to, to make sure that neighbors, neighbors in our, um, you know, East Milton area are not negatively impacted. So I wanna shout out, do a shout out to them. They're amazing. But I know Jim Coyle has addressed it and other people have addressed it. Uh, there's no plans to have a truck that's gonna service five-story buildings. So these two developments coming up, uh, you know, do the developers think that's okay? They think that's, uh, acceptable to put up a, a five-story building, knowing that our town has no plans and cannot now or not, nor in the future, service fees and, and faithfully, uh, you know, you know, during an emergency, uh, actually come to the rescue of, of, of these residents, that, these potential residents. I don't think that's acceptable. I think that right there, I should put everything on pause, uh, go back to the drawing board because they should not be, that, that should not be allowed. And the, you know, I know in, in the other developer's case, it was, oh, well, Quincy will just deal with it. Quincy's a city, Boston's a city. They have their own problems, they have their own. Basically, we have, we have our emergencies where it's, you know, uh, but it shouldn't be, that, that in and of itself should stop this, this project. Safety, safety, safety. Children.
Thank you.
And the emergency situations. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms.
I, I couldn't hear somebody, somebody telling me to wrap it up. I don't hear it.
All right. No, thank you.
I, I would just like to say, Danny, that, um, you know, it's wonderful to, people are interested, but it's not wonderful to begin to, um, make comments that could put other neighbors who've made comments, um, on the defensive. And I, I'm feeling as if we need to keep a very respectful tone amongst all of the people who are providing comments. Um, it's, it's really hard for people who support a project to come and speak at meetings when there's more people who are, are going to be outspoken against something. And it's really hard to get diverse opinion if people feel as if they're being put on the spot and have to be defensive. And so, uh, the reason I tried to interrupt a few times is, um, I'm, I'm sorry, the last speaker, you make some, uh, valid, very valid comments, but I think you also treaded into, um, some territory that I'm concerned about in terms of other people's comments. And so I just wanted to, uh, please make that point, Danny, so that all of our speakers can be respectful for all of their neighbors and all of our neighbors.
Oh, did I, did I misspeak? I apologize. I was, I was praising the efforts of some of my neighbors, but I wasn't quoting them. Is that what you were talking about?
I'm, I'm not sure, um, I, I'm, I'm not, Ms. McAvoy, um, but, but, but thank you. You did raise a lot of good points as well.
Well, I just wanna, I wanna apologize if I was, I, I don't know who I misspoke about, but could you let me know, Mr. Togias? Was I misspeaking? Did I quote somebody?
I'm, I'm, um, commenting more about some tone and some accusations even towards the developer. And, you know, there's been accusations from other speakers about the developer's intention. I don't think that's appropriate. I think we have to be respectful of the applicants as well as all neighbors and, and all members of the board. And, uh, you know, um, comments, um, that, um, that don't kind of bear that in mind, I, I, is what I was referring to.
Okay, I, I, I think.
Okay, if you could let me know exactly what it was, um, if I, you know, um, disrespected somebody, you could let me know and I could, I could speak to that.
Danny, I think, you know, I, I appreciate that, you know, thank you. Um, we have a couple of other people with their hands raised, so maybe it's time to move on to another comment.
Thank you so much. Oh, thank you, Ms. McAvoy. Thank you for participating. Um, okay, Carol, Carolina Alerte. I'm so sorry, I'm never gonna get this name right, but I guess.
Thank you.
For, for a third time, I think. So we'll make it quick this time, okay?
I will be quick. It's Caroline Broce. I, it's not changed on my account. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I, I changed, I got married and changed my name. This is Caroline Broce speaking. Um, thirty-sixth Lotter Avenue for the full time. Um, I do have, see the points for them, Ms. Bernadette, um, having concerns. Having concerns, a lot of concerns there. I don't agree with all of them, but I want people to also not forget because it just becomes a discussion where everybody's getting mad and fighting and not seeing the real deal. What we're doing here, what we are trying to build is more housing for people. And people were complaining about it's only legal.
No, she owns 13 properties.
Oh, okay, I think Alison, we might be hearing you. Alison, you might be able, okay, all right, well, thank you. I think, I think.
Sorry.
Okay, no.
I had an interruption from a child. I wasn't paying attention.
That's quite all right. Well, thank you. I, I, I take your point thoughtfully. Thank you. All right, we will go on to Ms. Autumn. Again, I think we heard from you before, but if you don't mind giving us your, your last name and your street address, Autumn?
Sure, Woodward Court, and my last name's O'Haggy.
Thank you.
I was just reading a bit about the 10% affordable housing goal that Milton might have. It's the state goal as well. So I was just curious to hear, maybe in the future, a bit more about the affordable housing goal and how it will be a benefit. Having three out of 33 units to be affordable housing does seem pretty low. So I just wanted to mention that I agreed with the people who did mention that earlier. That was all. I'd love to hear more information on it.
Yes, Kathleen, you may speak because nobody else's hand is raised, so it's a perfect time. Please.
Thanks, I just wanted to address the question that just came up about affordable housing, is that we do have an affordable housing committee on the Board of Selectmen does. And there's lots of information on the website, on the town's website, about 40B, which is probably what you're talking about. And the requirement of every Sydney town in the Commonwealth to have 10% of their units be affordable. This project isn't being done under that statute, so they don't have to have 25% affordable. The other project for East Milton is a 40B and does require 25. This applicant has offered to do 10% affordable. He's not, they're not required to do that, as they are with the other projects that we have in town. But I would call your attention to the fact that we do have lots of information on the town's website about affordable housing and goals in this town.
Okay. And thank you for having those facts ready, Kathleen. So it seems that, it seems that we don't have any hands raised, so. That was good. Okay, I thought I could read the letters that we received into the record. Of course, I can't read them all in full, so I've sort of put them into some lumps. So we had two committees that voiced their support for the project. So I will read these letters into the file, into the public record. Okay, it's a letter from the Milton Master Plan Implementation Committee and the Milton Housing Committee. And they are the same letter, except for one sentence is different. So "The proponent of the 440 Granite Avenue project presented the proposed project at a joint meeting of the Master Plan Implementation Committee and the Housing Committee last evening. The team explained that the project is undergoing a site plan approval process with the Planning Board and a variance process with the Board of Appeals. After a productive discussion, the Master Plan Implementation Committee voted 4 to 0 to express support for the project. And the Housing Committee voted 3 to 0 to express support for the project, viewing it as being consistent with goals in the master plan, the housing production plan, and with planning efforts in East Milton Square. The project would provide mixed-use development on an underutilized parcel with 33 new housing units, including three affordable units, ground-level commercial space improvements to the public realm, including sidewalks and street trees, and significantly increased tax revenue." And that's signed by Cheryl Togias, Chair of the Master Plan Implementation Committee, and Melinda Collins, Chair of the Housing Committee. So we had three residents in favor of the project. Elizabeth Phil was short and sweet. She said, "I'm writing in support of Michael Moore's development project for 40 Granite Avenue." And she lives at 457 Elliott Street. Let's see, we had someone from Forbes Road. "I'm writing to voice my overwhelming support for the development of 440 Granite Avenue. Reasons to support this development are many, but to list a few, a friendly development to the town with the right intentions, a great development team with a track record of successful planning, a significant increase in tax base, the additional quality housing stock for Milton residents looking to downsize, graded commercial space, taking a difficult site on a highway, adding creative, modern, green building, a gateway to Milton." Let's see, we have 22 Elm Street, Ed and Krista Cohane. "I'm a lifelong resident of Milton. I grew up in Reservation Road, attended Milton Public Schools, and after," oh, I'm sorry, let me get more into the detail here. "The wonderful energy that comes from progress and change. I'm encouraged when the town embraces smart strategic development that further propels the community. I support the project and hope to see it move forward, increasing our tax base by growing top-shelf commercial spaces is a win, doing so while creating homes for young individuals and retirees is a bonus. A strategic step forward for the town." Then we have, those were outside of East Milton. We have two in East Milton that support the project. "To us, the project is a no-brainer, and we enthusiastically support its approval, graded commercial space. We desperately need our, to increase our commercial tax base. Let's see, elderly can downsize, attractive opportunities, neighborhood within walking distance of trendy restaurants, shops, banks, et cetera." Okay, and then we had our final letter of support. Dick Burke was a little bit more nuanced, but he had a very long letter, so I will try to, I'll just go directly to his summary because I recommend everybody read it, but "I believe this development, as presented, is an improvement to East Milton that provides benefits that were identified by town residents during the master plan process, and they are worthy of consideration. My concerns should and will be addressed by the Planning Board, and a non-40B development is a welcome change, in my opinion. Needs to let the perfect, needs not to let the perfect be the enemy of the good. Well, Milton needs not to let the perfect be the enemy of the good. I think there may be room for some compromise between the developer and the neighbors. How much, if at all, is the question?" Then we have five letters from East Milton residents. Let's see. Resident of East Milton, working in real estate management. Thought the design was thoughtful. Breaking up the facade was great. Works on sidewalks was great. That she questions the quality of the exterior material. Does not support the variance for the overhang on the sidewalk. It prevents the trees from growing, drips water on pedestrians, unnecessarily increases the building massing. Has not seen a green rope that works. Lack of parking is of concern. The commercial space is 3,500 square feet, and office space could have approximately 15 to 25 employees. I do not believe a flower shop could support the rent of the new space. It just, it has great concerns about not having enough parking available. She thinks residential condos will have more than one car. "I chose to live in Milton, which is not a city, a town. Help us preserve the character of the town, village-like feel for our neighborhood." Okay, so that is, we're in Lizzieo 160 Alvin Avenue. This is Mary Sullivan, 83 Governors Road, Director of Sunshine School at 610 Adams Street. Recognize and favor more affordable housing, but I believe this project is unacceptable to both my neighbor and myself. Worse than existing traffic and parking issues. East Milton streets are quite narrow, adversely affect public safety. Project could be reduced by half. Project ought to reflect historical character of the neighborhood, railway district. Suggests a smaller number of units, smaller footprint. I believe these changes would allow the developer to invest in our town and in the success of the project. Development, okay, new person, Tony Flanagan, 36 Wood Street. Development that's planned is too large and too tall, too crowded. Not planned realistically to improve the town, too few parking spaces, too many residential units. Little regard for the impact of the town. Doesn't integrate successfully into the neighborhood. East Milton is already very busy and crowded. Already of desired destination for living, visiting, shopping. Please demand this development be amended to complement an already great neighborhood, rather than tower over overcrowded, despite our part of town. Okay, so then we have Elaine Hahn, 84 Antwerp Street. Very long letter, so I'm just going to quickly. "I'm not opposed to affordable housing, recognize the need for it, but this, these kind of projects are," she's also talking about the 40B, but she's saying too big. "Comments from a deep-rooted love for the area. Very disappointed about the loss of 15 parking spaces, as we all are. What has been presented for both apartment buildings are oversized and modern, both should be reduced by at least half. Do their best to fit into the neighboring railway historic district." She says, "Nobody abides by street signs in East Milton. Where will all the contractors and subcontractors and construction vehicles park? Where will they be parked overnight and on weekends? How will our streets be affected? Will there be detours? How much traffic? Cut-throughs, swanum. Buildings go right up to the sidewalks, there's lack of landscaping. She would like to see a pushback with more landscaping. Like to see more green space, less cement space. She understands that there's going to be something built there, but she just wants a lot more thought to go in. Sticks Alix with some." All right.
Dani, can I, can I ask if you're okay with this? A lot of people took time out of their busy lives to write these comment letters, and it would be great if we could read every one of them, but we do have, I think, a couple additional items on the agenda. In the interest of just not taking up these people's time, because it's 9:30. Does it make sense for me to scan them and attach them to the meeting minutes as part of the public record? If that's helpful?
I'm happy to make.
I would recommend that.
Public record. I just have, there's, there's a few more that I just think, I mean, I'm this far, but I agree in general. I think that's probably a great idea. But like, for instance, there were 15 letters that were basically the same. I could read that into the letter, just quickly read the names. There was 24.
It's on the website.
Well, Dani, not to cut you off, but I know that some folks are pushing for that, but I know we had a meeting not long ago, and some folks wanted to hear some things written, called in.
Yeah, we had a big request.
You should probably just be consistent. So I like what you're doing, is you're summarizing. Because it could be all night if you read them all, but we absolutely should be like uploading these somewhere. So Alison, I, for one, think you should do that.
Okay. All right.
Rich, just to, just to, these are on the website. Every letter that we get on a Friday, I upload a new compilation of the project page. If you go to the Planning Board website under Development Projects and Zoning, there's a 440 Granite Ave page. So those have, those have been up, you know, since, since the project started.
Okay. All right, well, I mean, it, it's just a little weird to read some people's and not other people's at this point.
Just keep going.
Okay.
But, but just remember, tell everybody that we've got them posted on the website.
Okay. All right, so these five people covered this, these points, okay. Let's see, "While I recognize that more affordable housing is needed, it's my belief that this project, as currently presented, is unacceptable to both my neighbors and me. The general consensus is the project is poorly planned, is too large, will only worsen our existing traffic and parking issues. Streets in East Milton are very narrow. Project of this scale adversely affect public safety for pedestrians and neighbors. Project should be reduced by half." Let's see. Let's see, a smaller number of units, a smaller footprint. These changes would show the developer is invested in the town. And that's Rosemary Steven of 19Haw, Kathleen Barrar, not sure for address. I think it's Pamela Schmidt, 86 Church Street, John and Janet Dunn, 38 Emerson Road. And then Sage Sally Hayward, 171 Church Street. And then we have 15 people who submitted a letter that all hit the same points. They're all East Milton residents. They oppose the 440 Granite Ave five-story building. Not opposed to mixed use, but they think the project should be three to four stories maximum. Development should provide adequate onsite parking. Project is too big for the area, would negatively impact quality of life in East Milton. Milton is a town, not a city. Help us preserve the character of our town and village-like feel of our neighborhood. So that's Ethan and Jennifer K., 71 Wood Street, Peter and Kathleen Powers, 8 Governors Road, Hilda Mahan, 15 Antwerp Street, Mary Ellen Welch, 20 Osborne Road, Mary E. Sullivan, 83 Governors Road, Stephen Rhines, 46 Belcher Circle, Linder O'Connor, 45 Wood Street, Frances Malone, 125 Franklin Street, Debbie Malone, 125 Franklin Street, Tony Flanagan, 36 Wood Street, David and Mary Doherty, 27 Pierce Street, Thomas Conroy, 19 Emerson Road, Kimberly Conroy, 19 Emerson Road, Suzanne Brown, 566 Adams Street, Tim and Laura Baxter, 73 Franklin Street. So they are all East Milton. 24 neighbors within the two-block radius of the development, the proposed development signed this letter. Parking issues. Mechanic Street will become a driveway for 32 more residents and 64 cars. There are currently only eight residents on Mechanic. The proposed elevator parking is not convenient for residents. They're afraid it will guarantee cars will be left on the street. Parking for guests and commercial spaces inadequate. Mechanic Street and Pierce Street are already overwhelmed with patrons of East Milton Square parking here, as are other streets. We already have a long-established funeral home, which during funerals, people park everywhere and anywhere. Where will these cars go? Currently, we have a local business using a single-family home yard for customers' parking, which is unacceptable. There has been a loss of 12 spaces in East Milton Square. Parking and traffic issues also bring about safety issues such as emergency vehicle access and pedestrian safety. Building size, the height of the building at five stories is overwhelmingly taller than surrounding homes. This will contribute to the loss of sunlight, breezes, and privacy. Being that the building is in an area known as Historic Railway Village, shouldn't it have more colonial or old New England look to it? Zoom meeting, most of us found it hard, if not possible, impossible to adopt the Zoom forum, while we all agreed East Milton needs redevelopment and must be done in a careful, balanced way. And there are 24 signatures. Lauren Lee Bowes of 32 Pierce, Brian Bowes, 32 Pierce, Gil Ortiz, 32 Pierce. Please forgive me, it's signature, so it's harder to read. Alman Monahan, 35 Pierce, John Finn, 38. I can't read this one, 38. Somebody, Margaret Little, 48 Pierce, Mary Whitaker, 48 Pierce, Colin Whitaker, 48 Pierce, Sue Erner, 60 Pierce, John Erner, 60 Pierce, Susan McGod, 19 Pierce, Roberta Graber, 23 Pierce, David Doherty, 27 Pierce, Mary Doherty, 27 Pierce, Julie McNulty, 7 Pierce, B. Zarber, 15 Pierce, Royal Wood, and Ryan Wood, 583 Adams, Michael Shemai Slow, 577 Adams, Brian McDonnell, 569 Adams, Michael T. Tosh, 15 Mechanic, Nancy Costello, 15 Mechanic, someone else, 21 Mechanic, Eddie Shay, 26 Mechanic. Okay, Jim Coyle. "New development must only be approved if ones like parking for all employees, customers, and tenants is included. Minimum of 10 feet, 15 set back from public sidewalks and add green space. Full permanent access around all new buildings for fire trucks, emergency access. Limit height to three stories. I'm opposed to the currently proposed five-story, which takes up the entire site without green space and does not have a village architectural look that many of my neighbors would find acceptable." Okay. See. Then the East Milton Neighborhood Association submitted a letter where they present tonight. I guess, I guess I'll accept that that would go on. I guess, I, I guess I'll accept that that would go onto the town website if, if nobody objects. Okay, and then, um. We did hear from Nancy Costello of fifteen Mechanic Street. And she said that she tried to preserve as many of the original features that made her fall in love with her house. Her house is abutting the project. She was careful to preserve the original integrity of the home. She moved here thirty years ago. Let's see, she's rolled with the punches in those last thirty years, very quiet. You know, when she first moved in, it was a quiet residential neighborhood walkable. She understands that they have butted a business district. But they've been subjected to an increase in businesses opened until late in the evening. Traffic, lack of parking, cars driving the wrong way, business employees using street front in front of their home. For twelve hours daily, even on Sundays, businesses using security. Lighting pointed directly at their home, increased trash from overflowing dumpsters, people. Parking across their driveway. They've survived two complete renovations of the deck. The five stories. Will be blocking sun on their yard. Our home is such that the sun shines through our windows and skylights for the entire day. We will no doubt have increased heating bills if this project's approved. Our backyard is our heaven. There isn't a setback proposed from our home's viewpoint. Our privacy will be non-existent, it's hard to get a sense of the potential impact unless you are here in person. So there's a lot more to this letter, but she basically. You know, she wants to make the town beautiful by not allowing this project to move forward. Please feel free to reach out. And she provided us a photograph of her backyard, so that will all be in the public. So, there you go.
Nice job.
Thank you. Okay, um, let's see. Suzanne Brown has her hand up. Okay, I'm happy to hear from you Suzanne.
Hey, I'm sorry, I already asked a question, but, um, if you approve this project. Can we put it in the writing that we are not responsible for a sound barrier for the expressway? Once the people move in, I think the town will be responsible like it was on Granite Ave to put this sound barrier up because of the noise.
Okay, that's an interesting question.
Can it be written in?
I don't think we have any control over that, that sound barriers are done, I think, by the, by the highway, the state highway department.
Right, but is the town gonna be responsible? Ie, the taxpayers are responsible for these people that move in and know it's abutting an expressway, but yet there's sound. I live in East Milton Square, I go, I get the fire, traffic, everything.
Oh, no, I live in East Milton as well, so, and I actually had to mute my, you know, tonight, I had to mute myself a couple of times. Because you can hear the fires, fire equipment on the, on the expressway. But, um, without something that we would have to look at, but I, it's seriously. The idea that the town would be responsible for building, putting up sound barriers, I, I've never heard that, never seen that in a.
The town did it over in State Street on the other side.
I don't think the town did that.
Well, yeah, I, I think we can look into it.
We can look that up, yeah, it's a question of fact.
Allison, if you don't mind, can we take a look at that? Be good to know.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, alright, well, um, it seems as though we don't have any more hands up. Is that correct, public? Okay, alright, did anyone on the planning board want to speak about this?
Danny, I'd like to make a suggestion. We have several other items on the agenda tonight. And we've, we've had a lot of time dedicated to this particular agenda item. So I'd like to make a suggestion that we continue the hearing to our next meeting. And I'd like to make a suggestion about what we might expect at that meeting, if that's okay.
Okay, I'm, I'm interested to hear your suggestion.
Okay, so I mentioned earlier, and I think it played it. What my thought about the suggestion was to have the traffic consultant, VHB, be at that, the next meeting. Because there's a lot of discussion about parking and traffic, which I think, you know, they can help us address. And then I'd like to suggest that perhaps staff can try. We've done this another time, other projects where we can kind of generally categorize some of the feedback or the comments that we received. You know, so traffic and parking being one, you know, maybe. Height or building design, design being others, you know, so then that we can ask the, the applicant to address, you know, sort of some. I, I'd rather not say every detail maybe at this juncture, but at least the broad concepts of concern that we've heard. And, um, and have them. Marion had a detailed memo that she supplied to us where she addressed, you know, all the comments and response that they've done to date. And I'd like to ask that she go through that memo and maybe even update it based on what they heard tonight. Because I do think it's, we've seen it, but the public, you know, hasn't necessarily. And, and for, and we've not had necessarily sixty or seventy people at every one of these Zoom meetings. So they may not have heard all of the things that we've heard in the past since we've been, since the first hearing for this open. So I, I think that that would be an important thing. And then I would like to have each of us sort of address. You know, have time to comment on, on where we think this project is. I know some people asked for additional time. The applicant said tonight that they started a year ago, and they've also, Marion's memo suggested that they would like a vote soon. So I think we should come to some kind of decision about our, our timeframe for this. You know, because I want to be respectful of, of both the applicant and the neighbors in terms of what the expectations are.
Okay, well, um, I wanted to see if, um. I wanted to see if the applicant, given that we've just spent two hours listening to the citizens, if the applicant wanted. A little bit of time to do some work, you know, on their public outreach. Or just some time, because they, there was a lot of feedback tonight, good and, you know, positive and, and, you know, some challenges. So I, I didn't know if the applicant wanted to come back in two weeks, or if they wanted to come back in a month. And that was one question I had. I don't know if Marion wants to speak to that. Is Marion?
Just unmuting, just unmuting myself. Well, we, in, in our discussions, which we had just before this meeting, and we have regularly. We, we are, we certainly expect that we'd come back in two weeks. I don't know whether anybody, maybe Michael Moore would like to weigh in on that as well. And, you know, there was, I, I have almost an entire pad of notes. You know, I always take very careful notes on all the comments. And we have attempted to answer many of these comments, but I understand that, that there's a lot of material and that it needs to be concisely responded to. So certainly I would expect that the next time, not only would I review the memo I prepared for this meeting, but I would update it. We would do the review, i- if we're ready on the traffic peer review, we'd have VHB handling that discussion. Since they're our traffic consultants. So I do think that there's a lot of, a lot that we could do next week, but I think we need to talk amongst ourselves. Michael, you haven't changed your mind, you want to meet in two weeks, isn't that right? Or three weeks, it's actually three weeks from now.
Yeah, thanks, Marion, it's three weeks' time, so I think at this point, we would like to hold that date. And I think it will give us time to reach out to the community at large and, and address some of the comments that we've heard here tonight. So Danny, I think we'd like to hold that date of the eighteen to fourteen, I believe.
Okay, alright, I'm, I'm happy to hold that date, and if you get into it and you find you need another two weeks, please let us know. I, I would be okay if you, if you find, because I think that community engagement, I think that that could help. You along. Okay, alright, so. The, the rest of the planning board, okay with this approach that we would. Focus on traffic next time. I'm afraid our, our schedule is going to start getting jammed. So I think we might have to focus on traffic and maybe one other topic. And, and sort of come at it that way, because I, I, Tim probably knows the agenda for next time. But there's a lot of things coming up. We have the Winter Town meeting articles and so on. So, so anyway, could we, um, we'll narrow the top, we'll narrow the focus. We can be in touch, Marion.
Danny, I do have, I'm sorry, I'm okay with, um, you know, like pushing our discussion out, but, but I do have some comments I'd like to make tonight.
Okay, that's fine, I would love to hear from you. So we will do that. Okay, alright, so let's hear from Rich, and then we'll hear from any, the, the other planning board members.
Yeah, yeah, it's not long, it's just a couple of comments or questions. So I'm just gonna go right down the list, I made some notes while there was some talking going on, I mean, while the, while folks are speaking. I, I don't remember her last name, but she's on that street, Nancy, she was the one talking about the shadow study. Thank you, I apologize, I forgot, I didn't write that down. I have a question, I guess, and I don't know, maybe if this is something we can look into, but I, I did see the shadow study. Well, two comments, if Nancy has any, you know, questions or concerns about that, I, I do think maybe we should. You know, let, like, it's online, but if she has questions or wants some interpretation, I think she should be able to. Not to throw Tim and you and Allison out there, but I would imagine she could probably call you guys or, or, or reach out to somebody and ask some additional questions. I do have a question, though. You know, that's the shadow study on the existing building, but is there any, and I don't know what it takes to do a shadow study. Is there any way to see what the difference is if you went to a four story or a three story? Is that simple to do? Is it, I don't even know if this is just a speculation.
I think that's an excellent question.
Yeah, I did, and I'm just, I'm just interested to see if there's massive shifts. The other comment I would have, and I only have like three or four, so it would be quick. So the other one comment I'd make is, and I know this isn't our area of, you know, to, to find a solution here. But we are elected officials, and we've heard probably three or four times now, or at least three times with some pictures, I think, on one occasion. About some like illegal parking and illegal stuff going on in that street, like motorists going in the wrong directions, and it sounds painful. And while we're probably not the board to fix that, I do think as elected officials, it's, we're, you know, it's encumbered on us to kind of forward those things. If we haven't already, to the right people, to make sure somebody reaches out in this town to those neighbors. And kind of helps them out with that and gets to the bottom of it, because nobody should live like that for long periods of time. So this is something on three occasions, it's been stated. And if any, the right people that are supposed to deal with this, if they're hearing this, I'm really hoping that they reach out to these folks and take care of it. I know if I lived on that street, I'd, I'd want that.
I, I think that's an excellent point, I was, I keep thinking we should do something too. Tim and Allison, would you be willing to have a call with me this week? Maybe I could call, maybe, or maybe, maybe the staff could call. I, I don't know if it's the police department or, or the whoever does enforcement for both of those issues. Parking wrongfully and, and also driving down those one-way streets the wrong way.
Pretty easy to fix if, like, the right people get in, get on board, you know what I mean? This, people don't typically park in the wrong spot over and over and over again when they start amassing tickets. Folks that drive down the, you know, I will tell you that the best thing that I think Chase did at the DBW is put out some planners on Franklin Street. Because I for one haven't seen anybody illegally parked, except for maybe one time where I saw somebody literally move a planner with their car and squeeze in. But I mean, it's been, it's been great, I mean, it's not, it hasn't fixed the issue on that street. But it's a start, and that's, I think, what these folks, not gonna speak for them, I don't live on the street, but I would imagine they'd like to see a start or something happening. I do have, I'm sorry, let me get my one last one in, and then we can just move on, because I do have more comments or questions and, and things, but I don't want to do it tonight. The last one would be Steve Rhines had mentioned something, I just kind of wrote it down. It mentioned, I think it was Steve, I'm not sure if it was Jim Coyle, but one of them had mentioned Quincy turning down some of those auto parking garages. I didn't get to because of work to go out and see them. At some point, could the folks that did see them give us a little bit of their thoughts on it? Maybe we could even figure out why towns are not doing it, and maybe there are different reasons for what, you know. We would be looking at, but it'd be great to hear, they're obviously a neighbor, they're a city too, but they're, they're a neighbor, and I'd like to hear what they're doing and why. I mean, because they sounded like an interesting idea, but obviously if they've got some negative things going on, we just want to know about it so we can write it. That's all I had.
Yeah, no, I think those are great points, those are great questions.
On that point, Danny, can I just point out something on that? I'm familiar with parking systems, there are different kinds of parking systems. And when, and I'm happy at the next meeting, if that's when we do it. Rich, I did go and, and look at it, but I want to point out one thing that Mr. Moore pointed out when we did that site visit, which is that. The one we looked at is in a condominium building. And he, he said that he didn't think it would work as well in a rental building. Because you would have a turnover of residents more frequently, you would have to be trained in how to use the system. But he demonstrated how the system worked. And it was, and I've been involved in others, which are different kinds of parking systems. Which would be more challenging and which I would see why people would have more concerns about. So I think we just have to make sure we're looking at, when we're looking at other communities, the same system that's being proposed here. Because they're not all the same, and it's not an apples-to-apples kind of comparison.
No, no, I appreciate that, and it would be, yeah, it'd be great to hear from you, and I don't know, Steve, about to give you homework, but if you could maybe send Tim or Allison what those address. Like what, what those Quincy ones were, because, I mean, maybe they're different, I'd like to just kind of look at everything.
Well, I'm looking up online to see if I can find any, any information, so far I'm not. But I did go see them as well with Cheryl. And, and, and I have seen them in other operations, and actually the zoning board looked at one for the fruit center. But they're all different systems. And, and, and this one, you know, just has a visual sense, if you can remember when you were a kid and you had those little games with the squares.
Oh, yeah, no, it sounded really cool.
The squares, you move the squares around, and so it was, it was really, it was really great to see. And, 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 and that's right, I mean, I think we were told that with more turnover in a, in a rental project. You wouldn't really want to be doing that as the homeownership project, where people tend to stay there for a few years, you know.
I, I totally agree, and, and, yeah, I, I get the technology and like, I just. You know, being that it was brought up, it makes sense for us to look at all sets. Sorry, Jenny, one more comment, this is more of just a comment, because I know we have.
Well, if Steve's still listening in, maybe he can share.
Well, I'm just more like homework, maybe Steve can just email it. I do have one more comment, because I know we have like eighty-seven people at one point, I know there's still sixty people. And I know people will see this, but I, I do want people to understand, like, and know that, like, all of us on the planning board. Whether, you know, no matter what we're all thinking about this, we hear every one of you. We're definitely, like, I know, I can see people on, I'm just, sorry, I've got, it's very dark in this room, because I've got my kid sleeping. I'm not on camera, but I'm taking a lot of notes. And so, because I know that sometimes folks, like, especially do it at a town meeting, where folks will kind of try to win over the crowd. You get up multiple times and you're saying the same things. And, and I'm, I'm more, I definitely welcome folks, you know, come up, I mean, I'm, I'm not the chair, so Danny will make the decision. Come up and talk to us as many times as you want, you know, if we have the time. But we are definitely hearing folks, you know, you know, everything that everybody's saying, I know that I'm weighing in, I'm writing down and listening, and we'll be thinking about it. So I don't want folks to think that, hey, if one person had a comment and everyone else had the opposite comment, you know, that, to me, I listen, I'll listen to both. So I just want to make sure that's there, because I definitely, I know that things, you know, temperatures can run hot sometimes in these types of projects.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, this is, this is one of the. Yeah, yeah, I mean, this is, this is one of those projects that I I can't tell you how many hours I've spent reading and reading and reading and walking and walking and. And I I actually, Cheryl will appreciate this, I actually read the um. Volume one of the master plan on Saturday with this project in mind, and you know, a couple of blurbs came out. It sort of popped out to me. One of them is the goal statement on page sixty-five. To preserve Milton's character defined by its small town atmosphere, natural and historic features and the contrast. That these create when compared to the urban centers along the town's borders. So it's, you know, I, a lot of, a lot of the thoughtful comments tonight, pro and con. I mean, everybody who showed up tonight cares about the town, and they really, they really want want to see this project go well. We have a local developer, we, I think it's pretty widespread support for thirty-six Central Avenue. So we we want to, you know, we want to get this the best it possibly can be. And 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 find a way to to make it as nice and as transitional for the neighborhood. As well as the town and and something that is doable for the developer, so we're, we're really grasping at every straw. So I I learned a lot tonight, and I really appreciated the the creative thought that people put into this. And and staying up for hours with us, so.
Can I just add a couple of quick comments, they're not really. I just want to point people in a few directions, so there was a person who made a comment about. Parking traffic and affordable housing locations. And referencing East Milton Square, I just want to make sure that. People recognize that we see projects in all parts of town. And traffic and parking and affordable housing locations are not unique to East Milton Square. We're seeing them all across town, and you know, affordable housing really should be distributed across town, and. I suppose some people may not know that there are currently ten pending forty B projects. Which are looking to bring affordable housing in many different neighborhoods, and they have their own traffic and parking concerns. You know, Milton with its proximity to Boston is just sees traffic. That because of its very location, people are passing through Milton to get to points north and south. And it affects every neighborhood, so I just want people to recognize that 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 situation is something that we hear frequently. And. You know, we're. In terms of new development, oftentimes what traffic experts tell us is that a project, you know, certain projects. And we and we all, you know, ask them about their data, but they tell us that these new projects are going to have little. Impact because the volume of traffic is so great from other places, and so I think we just have to decide whether we. The the traffic that's coming from other places is going to inhibit us from making improvements to our town in certain locations. And so that's, that's one thing I wanted to point out, I wanted to point out another thing in the in the Judy Barrett report. There was a reference to page twenty-one as a concept, but the actual recommendation was not page twenty-one, it's page twenty-three. And so I'd like all of us to make sure that we look at what the actual recommendation report is on page twenty-three, so folks could take a look at that before our next meeting. And then another comment I wanted to make this generally, which we talked about a lot in Milton Village. Is when we build more parking, we encourage more congestion, we encourage more driving. And we really need to look at how to make, you know, a lot of East Milton Square, some of the. The traffic congestion has to do with people, you know, driving from from one point to another point because of safety concerns. But also people, you know, if we, if people park in certain places, they park the car and they leave it there and they run their errands on on foot. And so I think, you know, we have to be mindful that we have a small commercial districts. And that if we continue to build more parking, we're going to encourage more congestion, so I think we have to think about. And Tim has talked about this, so perhaps he can talk about it at the next meeting, it's how we can work on the the alternative modes of. Of getting us around safely and and why that. There's so much been written in the planning world about how you right-size the parking, and so we need to talk about that further.
And we also, as a, I'm sorry, just if I could piggyback on that, because we we also, as a board, have have. Decided, I think you were in this meeting, but we decided we would like to draft a letter and see if we can help the select board. In 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 taking Judy Barrett's recommendations and and coming up with some strategies. To address the concerns that have come to all of our boards over and over and over again. That make it difficult for us to discuss development, every time we try to discuss development, we end up talking about parking. Because it is a real issue and and safety and the way that the loading docks don't work and the way that. Things have gone into agreements with the restaurants, et cetera, and then they don't get enforced, so believe me. Citizens, we have heard you and heard you and heard you, and I I know it's an issue, and we do want to work with the other. Committees and boards in town and and try to really get our hands around that so that we can. All have more successful discussions. Meredith, did you have anything?
Thanks, Danny, I just wanted to say thank you, I'll have more comments specific to the project than we talked about.
Okay, wonderful, thank you, Meredith, did you want to say anything tonight about the?
I just really wanted to say thank you for everyone who showed up and who really cares about this project, and. I thought the comments were excellent from everybody, and and I have more comments, but I'm gonna save them for the next meeting, so.
Excellent, okay, okay.
Danny, real quick. Even if it's not related to to planning, you know, we're public employees before anything else, so if. If people have concerns, you know, about, you know, something, someone driving down their street the wrong way, they can always. Call us and we will put them in contact with the right person.
Thank you, that's what we like to hear. All you have to do is ask, and there she is, okay, that's wonderful, thank you. So we'll. You and I can talk, you know, one one morning this week and and strategize a something and we'll report back. Thank you, okay, all right, so. Let's move on to our next agenda item.
Don't we, did we have to sort of decide whether we're gonna follow up with, we had to vote to continue this hearing?
Okay, let's. I will entertain a motion to continue, Kathleen.
Thank you, I would make that motion to continue the hearing until October fourteenth.
I think we have to do a time specific, so would you like?
Seven, let's say seven fifteen, in case you want to squeeze something in before it. Know what I mean? Okay, all in favor, Meredith?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
Cheryl Taggias?
Yes.
Okay, so thank you everyone for coming, see you next time. All right. Our next agenda item is amendments of rules and regulations of the planning board. And this is related to our rules and regulations where we added tree language. So. In the last number of years, our planning board has gone to great lengths to create. Tree management plans during special permits and various agreements with developers and applicants that come before our board. We've learned that we spend a long time before we approve projects, doing our best to get it right before construction starts. It has come to our attention during and after projects, the trees have been harmed and removed unnecessarily, causing distress to broader area. Including water issues on and off-site affecting of butters, so. As a board, we decided we want to get these rules of the road down for applicants and citizens to be aware of. So we have updated our planning board rules and regulations in three sections. Five point four, statement of development effect, seven point four six, planting space, and thirteen scenic ways. We have added, we have just added language where we mention trees and we mention trees. Need to be on plans. They need to be included as protected things, like other vegetation. And then we. We came up with some healthy guidelines to refer to, so applicants and the public. Can understand good ways of replacing trees and good ways of protecting trees during construction. We add as the Shade Tree Committee as as. An organization that is a great resource. We we wanted to. Protect trees around stone walls and other things when those are being built or changed. So we have, as a board, been over this ad nauseam, but I didn't know if there was anyone from the public. Who was interested in the tree rules and regulations. I'll check for anybody raising any hands. Wow, we still have a lot of people paying attention tonight. But nobody interested in trees, because we've talked about them too much, Kathleen. Okay.
I haven't talked about them too much.
I know, it's me, I know, it's me and Cheryl, me and Cheryl, it's all we talk about, trees, trees, trees. Cheryl and I will be that old group of friends sitting on the porch.
I appreciate it, but you know, it's a five thousand square foot lot, I don't really have a whole lot of trees.
Well, thank you for putting up with us. I will entertain a motion. To approve our new tree rules regulations. Language that we have discussed a million times, two, five point four, statement of development and effect. Seven point four six, planting space, and thirteen scenic ways.
I would make a motion to approve the amendments to our rules and regulations in the sections that you have just listed.
I'll second that.
Thank you, all in favor, Meredith Paul?
Yes.
Rich Beeler?
Yes.
Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
Cheryl Taggias?
Yes.
Denny Swenson, yes. And we should thank April Lamro, because she went through that with us, and. I realized that I didn't include myself in the motion to. Continue the meeting, I don't know if there's anything we can do, should I, should we just redo that motion, Kathleen? I got everybody else to say yes, but I forgot to say my name.
Oh.
For the continuation.
I would make a motion to continue the hearing on the four forty Granite Avenue to our next planning board meeting in October fourteenth, at seven fifteen.
All in favor, Meredith Paul?
Yes.
Rich Beeler?
Yes.
Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
Cheryl Taggias?
Yes.
And Denny Swenson, now we did that right, okay. So. I feel for Wentworth Farm, boy, are they still here? That's our next agenda item, amendment of special permit for Wentworth Farm. It's related to a request before us about sidewalks in that development. Let's see, is Marion representing him?
I am.
She did.
Oh, good, hello Marion.
Lovely to see you. So I I am here representing the owner of the development, and the reason for that is that the owner still owns the last lot. It's actually under a, currently under a restriction before, until, like, it can't be released for actual sale until. There's a plan for completing the remaining roadway infrastructure, and they're working on that right now, so that's why I'm here representing the applicant. This request was initiated, and I believe they've sent correspondence to the planning board earlier, by owners of the lots. Who are asking. Basically, there's a condition in the original special permit for this development, and this is a very unusual, it's a cluster development. There was, there were a lot of waivers granted in order to finally approve this plan. This is probably one of the more minor ones, but instead of requiring that there be a subdivision sidewalk, a paved sidewalk. After much discussion at the original hearing, the planning board and the applicant came up with this. Idea of a grass sidewalk, but that it would have grass pavers at the base of it, so it's in the right of way. It's not actually on lawns, but it would, it would look kind of like the front lawn, because it would have grass pavers and. So that's the way it was left, and that's a condition in the special permit. That hasn't been installed yet, and most of these owners who now own the lots are all asking. Why there need to be pavers, they don't, I don't believe they're questioning the sidewalk, the grass sidewalk. But they're wondering what function the grass pavers would really perform, and they're concerned about future maintenance and. And whether, you know, they're really going to be. Practical, I guess, to take care of, so to the best extent that I can, I'm trying to represent their concerns. It's pretty late, so I don't know, but it was my understanding that a number of these. Lot owners might be zooming into this meeting and may want to speak, so I don't believe that the board is. Probably going to spend hours and hours discussing this request, I have a, I have an idea that I'll probably get a sense pretty quickly where the board members are. But before we have any discussion, I would, I guess I would ask the board to see if there is anybody. Representing the lot owners who wants to speak as well as me.
Okay, I would be happy to hear from any of the citizens on that street if they would like to speak, just raise your hand. It's no pressure, but you are welcome to speak on the Wentworth Farm Road, okay, I see Chris and Stacy. Polly? My vision isn't great at ten o'clock at night here.
Chris and Stacy Poli here, fifteen Wentworth Farm Road. We are the first, and as of almost a year now, we moved here last October. The only inhabitants of this street as it has developed before our eyes. We moved here from Belmont and. Love the neighborhood, love the town, and the perspective that I'm gonna bring, I think is unique in 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 two, in two ways. First and foremost, as a developer myself, I'm very familiar with this process, I understand how many projects. It's very difficult with many projects to understand, you know, how something conceptually is going to work at the beginning. Versus how it actually plays out in reality and what it looks like when it's actually built in practicality. And people do their best to try and make the best laid plans based on what they know and what they understand and what they think and the information they have. We can never predict the future, I can provide that context in some way, because I have lived in, like I said, lived here and been the only. My wife and I and our two children have been the only inhabitants here for for a year, other than the construction workers who are building the other homes on the street. And what I can say to you is that I just don't see the need. For a sidewalk of any kind. Particularly not a grass sidewalk, like I said, I am in development, I've never seen anything or heard of anything like that. This is a private way, if you're unfamiliar with the area, this is a dead end off a dead end. It's an extremely quiet secluded neighborhood, and it's getting a gate. So privacy concerns, safety concerns, certainly not something that I have, I have two small children, I have a three-year-old daughter, a six-month-old. And so certainly, safety and everything like that is a is a major priority in our household, but. I just don't see how this addition or this requirement to our neighborhood, to our street. Is necessary, and I only could see it bringing a burden to the neighborhood from a maintenance and an aesthetic standpoint, I just don't see how it fits. Even the sidewalks on Ford Ranch Road, which is the road you have to take to get to our neighborhood. They're in disrepair, quite frankly, and when we take our kids and our dog out to walk on that street, we typically walk down the street and. Maybe one out of ten times will accompany another car, and it's typically another neighbor, so it's a very quiet section. It's a very private area, and I don't, I just don't see the need or the the requirement for a sidewalk, particularly not one. Made of grass pavers or anything like that, I don't understand what service that, what purpose that would serve.
All right, well, thank you for your for your feedback and your insights. So you see no need for a grass sidewalk, private way, off a dead end. Brings a burden for upkeep, and you don't see the benefit with the appearance issues. Is that a good summary?
Yeah, I think so, definitely. Yeah, I think so, definitely.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um, all right, um, I, I see someone else's hand up, so I'll, I'll call on your next neighbor. Thank you for participating.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Um, Allison and Justin Kessler. Would you like to join us tonight?
Yes, please. Thank you. Justin Kessler, twelve Wentworth Farm Road. We appreciate uh, the time. And um, to echo Chris, I'll, I'll probably make it even uh, even easier. You know, we sat here tonight and listened to a lot of people um, with a lot of differing opinions. Fight, whatever, whatever you want to call it, have a, have a little bit of adversarial conversation and um, I think this decision can be very easy. You have a petition signed by every landowner right now uh, on the street. And uh, we are all in full agreement that we do not need any type of sidewalk. Um, we're looking at a street that is gated, has low foot traffic and is a cul-de-sac and, and basically everything else that Chris said. So I'm not going to beat a dead horse, but I think we can all ultimately agree that if this is approved, you folks can probably eliminate a lot of internal controversy that could arise because of the fact that we had to do this and differing opinions with neighbors and how it's kept, so on and so forth. And like Chris said, um, I'm not a uh, I'm not a design guy. I don't know much about anything. But I can tell you that I have never heard of a grass sidewalk either. So uh, we're not in favor of any type of sidewalk as the plan calls for.
Hmm, um, all right, um, wh- when you bought the home, you um, did you put, did you hire a builder? Did you, we, so you, so you were aware of the requirement when you came in?
We were, um, but, you know, we also knew that sometimes um, different um, things have to be put into plans in order to get passed. And the fact that we've kind of all come together now, a hundred percent of the, the property owners want something. I think this could be very easy fix. I mean, I don't, I don't know how many times people come in front of you where ten property owners from the same street are in full agreement about something. So um, you know, I also know that things can be changed, so.
I also, hi, I'm Allison. I also want to add that when we did buy the land, we obviously didn't have the plan for the, the house, the engineering and everything that went into it at the time. And I know I'm personally on our lot, it's getting very, very tight in terms of what we can do. We want to keep the integrity of the area and, and the historic area and everything. We, we have a vision for how it's going to look. We all, we feel that it, it frankly going to take away from that. Um, there's no foot traffic on the street and at, at this point, if I had a grass path in my plan, it would set the, you know, the st- it would impede upon like the natural stone walls and everything that, that we're keeping in place. And it would honestly be a burden uh, to us, you know, personally. And I, I feel that our neighbors feel the same way, but um, you know, yes, we knew about the, the guidelines when we bought it. But as things have panned out, I mean, I thought my lot for Milton was huge when I got it. It's point six-six. Turns out not so much when you try to put the septic and everything, like we don't have a city sewer. And so we're really, and I have a, a conservation finger on my lot too. So then that sets it back another twenty-five feet. So I ha- I'm working with not a lot, it turns out. So we didn't find that out until after. So and I fe- I feel like several people are probably in that position also. So I just want to bring that up.
Great, okay, thank you. And you, um, mentioned a petition. Ha- has that been provided to the town staff? Okay, I haven't seen it yet, but I.
I, I know, um, Denny, I have signa- I have the signatures. Um, so if you don't have it, I will make sure that you have it.
Okay.
It's in our file folder for the, it's on our website. It's in the file folder for the meeting.
Okay, I didn't see that, but I didn't check for a few hours either, so it might have snuck in when I wasn't looking. So thank you. Um, well, well, thank you. Um, thank you neighbors, um, Allison and Justin and Chris and Stacy. Um, thank you. Um, let's see. Uh, let's see. Oh, does Katie Conlin want to, Cronin, Katie Cronin? Uh, Katie Cronin, would you like to speak on this? Are you a resident?
Yes, hi, this is Katie Cronin. We're at seven Wentworth Farm Road. Um, I'm just going to be really quick and just reiterate what my neighbors have already said, but we all just feel really strongly that this sidewalk is just not necessary um, in our neighborhood. It's, we have four young kids and it's a really, really quiet dead-end street, which is what we love about it. Um, and we just don't think that it's necessary to have, to have them. Um, it's just so quiet. There's not a lot of traffic or foot traffic. And also what everyone else has said is just, we don't need to do the maintenance of having those sidewalks. Um, so I think we're all in agreement on this.
Okay, thank you. Pardon me. Um, thank you very much for participating. Okay, um, all right, well, if there's no one else from the neighborhood, uh, Marion, did you want to add anything before uh, we speak as a board?
Uh, no, I think that, well, I think the um, those who are living on the street are expressing to you what their viewpoint is now that they're there and they're looking at things. I was there during the hearing. I remember all of the discussion. I know that this was, you know, a resolution we came to in lieu of perhaps a paved sidewalk. Um, and the best I can tell you is it's just, it's just an interesting neighborhood. I mean, you have Hillside Street, which does not have sidewalks. It's very rural. It's a scenic way, scenic road. Um, stone walls and so forth. And I suspect that men, people moving into this area are looking to have that same feeling, even though they're building new houses. The houses are, tend to be colonial style. I know there's a lot of control being exercised over the way they look. So they're picking up on that. Um, on the other hand, you have the subdivision roadway that's right outside Ford Ranch Road, does have a sidewalk, but it is a dead end. So both streets are dead ends. So I mean, uh, these points have been made by the owners, lot owners. Um, I'm sure they'll be interested to hear what the planning board members think about it. I don't really have a lot to add to what they said.
Okay, well, thank you. All right, um, Tim or Cheryl might be able to speak better about the history of this. This is one of the first things I think I ever voted on as a planning board member. Um, so I would love to hear. So, so Cheryl was the only board member um, who knows the full story.
That true?
I think so. Um, and then I, I think it, I think Rich and Meredith and Kathleen all came on well after this, so.
All right, so I, I'll give a little bit of the history, but then I'd also like for Tim to review his memo. Um, this um, this site does have a long history. And in part, um, this plan for this number of lots was a negotiation with neighbors to avert a forty B development being proposed there. And so when it came to the planning board with a very, very long list of waivers, the planning board was put into a difficult position of having something that had the support of neighbors that required so many uh, waivers that it, we were concerned it would set precedent um, for other locations. Um, and we were concerned that it was um, the waiver for the lack of sidewalk on top of the waiver for the narrower road was a bad precedent to set. Um, we had, as a town, since the time of this first, of this permit, have adopted a complete streets program. We've had uh, a development come back to us and ask if they could amend their permit. This was um, I, I believe at Quisett Brook. When later residents who aged there in place discovered that they really did want to have a sidewalk. We've been going in a direction of being adverse to waiving the requirement to provide sidewalks. Um, and we reluctantly came to this agreement of this grass sidewalk for this particular development. And I personally am quite concerned about now even removing that. So I would suggest if you want to have a paved sidewalk, to consider that. But um, I'd like for Tim, at this point, um, Danny, to go through his memo to give the the sort of planning and, and thinking behind the not wanting to waive the sidewalk requirements um, that the board's been recently taking.
I'd be happy to hear from Tim if Tim is available.
Uh, cer- certainly I'm Denny. Um, I, I, I don't, I don't have the memo in front of me. I'm on my phone unfortunately. Um, but I, I think Cheryl did kind of bring up um, some, some of the high points. Um, I, I, I did, um, I believe I appended to that memo, um, another memo that I had written um, way back in the day as a young assistant town planner. Um, the technical review materials um, for this cluster development. Um, you know, a- as Cheryl noted, there were a lot of request, requested waivers. Um, at the time I was asked to analyze those waivers. Um, you know, in, in, in the context of, of kind of planning principles and uh, you know, precedents that have been set by the board previously. Um, you know, the grass sidewalk was a compromise. Um, I, I think um, if, if, if the divi- I, I don't want to speak for, for Mr. Hamilton. Um, you know, I, I, I think he would have rather have had no sidewalks um, in the first place. Um, I had recommended at the time um, in my technical review um, that um, you know, the planning board should be in the practice of, of providing safe pedestrian infrastructure on all of the roads that it has jurisdiction to approve. Um, you know, since twenty, I, I forget if this is twenty sixteen or twenty seventeen, we approved this thing. Um, you know, since then, as Cheryl noted, uh, we've adopted a complete streets policy. Um, complete streets is a concept um, that basically says that streets should be designed with, with equity and accessibility in mind for all users of the road. Um, drivers, uh, bicyclists, pedestrians, uh, people with mobility issues. Um, and, and that policy, you know, r- really extends to any, uh, you know, board committee department that has jurisdiction over, you know, the review and, and approval of, of streets, whether they're private or public, whether they're dead ends or cul-de-sacs or loops or whatever. Um, you know, that they need to be designed and implemented to the greatest extent possible with, with complete streets principles. Now, obviously this approval predates that policy. Um, but you know, to, to sit there and, and, and go back and say, you know, we have these meager pedestrian facilities and we're going to remove them and, and, and really just, you know, say, go ahead and walk in the street. Um, you know, I, I, I understand that there's low foot traffic. Um, you know, there's, if there's no one living there, um, there's going to be low foot traffic. Um, I understand that, you know, as those houses get built and populated, um, there's not a ton of people on that street. Um, but as I said in my memo, um, you know, Hillside Street, Ford Ranch Road, that's, that Scottswood area is, you know, a relatively, um, you know, low foot traffic part of town, but to, to, to not have those facilities is to say that no one will ever want to walk in the neighborhood. That no one will ever want to walk to Newcombe Farms, that no one will ever want to walk to Thayer Nursery or, you know, take a hike in the Blue Hills, you know, on foot without having to drive their car and try, try to find a parking space. And, and again, I understand people walk in the street and it's a low traffic area, but you know, the street is where cars drive. Um, you know, traffic violence is the top three, if not the top one killer of children in America. Um, you know, uh, this is something that as a staff we take extraordinarily seriously and, and quite frankly, don't speak or act uh, with moderation on. Um, you know, so i- it really is, you know, something that I think the planning board needs to take very seriously that um, you know, your, your responsibility and your role is, is, you know, to the current people of Milton, but it's also to the future people of Milton. And you know, to, to, like I said, the, the, the grass pavers, the grass sidewalk. You know, I, I, I agree with, with one of the commenters, you know, it was probably, you know, not the most tremendously thought-through decision in terms of, you know, the precedent for, you know, what does a grass sidewalk actually look like? Um, I, I don't know if there's actually a design or a, a detail in the plans that shows what type of actual kind of the mechanics of that would look like. Um, but I think that just speaks to the point that Cheryl made that, you know, if there's going to be an amendment to this plan, it should be for a, a, a proper, you know, paved sidewalk that, you know, is very clearly delineated from the street. Um, you know, something that, you know, there's no question about how to maintain it. You, you shovel it, you salt it, you fill the cracks when they come. Um, you know, as opposed to a kind of, you know, a, a fuzzy idea that, that we may have had a few years ago about, you know, what is a compromise between a sidewalk and nothing. Um, so you know, that's, you know, I don't have the memo in front of me, so I probably didn't speak in exactly those terms. Um, but you know, that, that's our position that, you know, I, we, we, we can as a staff recommend, um, you know, amending the special permit in this way, um, unless it went the other way and, and, and went towards a, a properly um, paved sidewalk.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you so much for that background. I remember that was a complicated um, project and it was a quite difficult, so, um, but I was pleased to drive through and see such beautiful houses on such a beautiful street. So that was very nice. So you do live in a very beautiful neighborhood. Um, and I do understand it, it's probably confusing for the neighbors to, to um, that, that, you know, buy a house and have to do pavers, but here we are. So um, did anyone else on the planning board want to speak to this or ask any questions? Or comments?
I'll, I'll speak. I.
Okay.
Because I'm, I'm, I'm very familiar with this area, the Hillside Harland area. And it is a very unique area. The rural character um, of this area is incredibly special. And um, and the homes that you're building in, I know in that area are just beautiful. Um, typically I would be always in favor of a sidewalk, except for I do know, I do know this area and I know how little traffic even goes, you know, goes down, you know, well, I shouldn't say hillside, but um, off the adjacent streets. Um, I think that to put in, to, to push for a, a concrete, more non, you know, permeable surface, um, I just think it will take away from the aesthetics of the area. Um, and I, I'm listening to, you know, that all ten neighbors agree and they're, they're in favor of not having sidewalks. And they understand better than anybody living there. Um, and so I, I actually in, in most cases, I would always support maintaining the sidewalk. But in this case, I, uh, I would not have an issue with allowing um, there to be no sidewalk in this, in this specific location.
Interesting, interesting.
I just want to point out something also that uh, Tim mentioned and you, you look like young, healthy folks and will have many years to enjoy where you're living. Um, but there are situations where people have family members who um, maybe become uh, elderly and need some assistance, uh, might need walkers, might need cane, um, or have other um, sorts of challenges. And uh, we have to think as Tim said, beyond like just what the current situation will be because um, the planners who decided that Brushel Road didn't um, need sidewalks um, at that time probably made sense and probably for the reasons that um, Meredith mentioned in terms of aesthetics. But Brushel Road's a very dangerous road. It's a scenic road, but it's a very dangerous road uh, to be a pedestrian and a runner on. And um, Canton Avenue where I live has sidewalks in some locations and it's on one side of the street, sometimes on the other side of the street and other time. And it's a narrow road too. And you know, Canton Avenue didn't used to be a busy street as well. And I re- I recognize that um, cul-de-sac will never have the same kind of traffic increases. But the people who live there, conditions, you know, may evolve over time and aging in places is uh, you know, something where having a pedestrian network is really important for people to be able to get outside and to be able to get some exercise. And so um, as I, I, I just wanted to point those out and add that to my comments.
Thank you. Great, I'm going to say this. I feel like I'm a ping pong ball. When I hear Tim, I'm with Tim. When I hear Meredith, I'm with Meredith. When I hear Cheryl, I'm with Cheryl. I'm just bouncing all around. So I'm interested to hear uh, Kathleen or Rich, if they have any comments, questions. And I, I, I was with the people when I heard the people, so this is a, I'm exhausted. This is a tough one. Okay.
Any questions?
Okay, let's hear it.
Um, so I wasn't familiar with this area, so I'm looking at
Oh, good.
Google Maps. So it doesn't look like, I mean, it's a cul-de-sac, so I'd imagine that there's not going to be a street past it, right?
Right.
Or on the opposite side. So I guess my how that, because then I would be concerned about, right, people walking through the area and things like that. So this is, this is a private way and I'm, honestly, I'm just not up on that. So private way, like, can folks go into this area? I heard a comment about a gate. Is this a gated community? Not up on that. So private way, like, can folks go into this area? I heard a comment about a gate. Is this a gated community or is it like? I don't understand. Like, can somebody talk to that?
When it's done, it will be gated. That's part of the appr- the plan, as far as I understand.
Okay.
Accessible by the public, cause it's actually, you gotta go over a bridge to get to the neighborhood, which in the bridge. Goes over a brook. So no traffic accessibility to anybody other than the residents. Or people who are granted access by the residents.
Okay, so that's that's what um. I don't know. I'm not, I'm not questioning you at all. I'm just asking, Tim, is that what you have in your notes or?
I don't recall there being a gate necessarily, gate at the time of approval. I'm not sure that that's something um that's changed. Uh but remember, there will be other people who I'm sure come visit you. Maybe your children will have friends come over and maybe there'll be people coming to take care of landscape. Or people who've come to do cleaning or whatever. So there will be other people who use the road. Just pointing that.
There's a difference, I guess, what I was trying to get at, Cheryl, is, and I guess, I don't know, somebody help me out with this, because I don't know the law. But there's, isn't there a difference? Is there not a difference between a gated community and a private way? Cause private ways doesn't mean that people can't walk down and go through the neighborhoods.
I see, yeah.
Right? I mean, am I wrong? I don't know.
Yeah, well, I I just a question. Is this a cluster development? It doesn't even have open space?
It is a cluster development.
Has somebody mentioned conservation easement?
There there is no public access to the open space. There is a conservation restriction. It is on record. And there are three um separate areas of conservation area in this development.
But no public access to it?
That's correct.
How can that be?
Because that's the way, that's the way it was approved. And that's why.
My god.
Well, that's actually been pretty common in in some of these, because what the problem is that the. It's a small development. There's going to be a home, there is a homeowners association. They will be responsible. And there's a liability issue when there is public access.
No, there isn't, Marion. No, there isn't.
Well, that's the way, that's the way it was presented at the time.
And that's that's wrong.
But I I'm just telling you, there is no public access to this. It's a, there's a restrictions on record and it's it's on record as not. Offering public access. There is access to all of the lot owners and their families. They may go in, obviously go into the conservation areas, but.
This is interesting, yeah. And and I only bring it up because I know like the Carberry Estates, right? That seems to be very private, but anybody can walk through there. You can't. The homeowners couldn't stop somebody from walking through the neighborhood. And so I guess that's my, I guess where I'm going with this is. If this is truly going to be a gated community, I'd probably be more apt to like, why does it matter that there's no sidewalks if they don't want them, they own the property? I guess my other question would be is typically the sidewalks are owned by the town. And so like you wouldn't, like, I can't go rip up my cement in front of my house because the town owns it. I mean, if it if it was grass, I couldn't like build on it because I don't own it. Or the town could eventually say, yeah, you put driveway there or you did something and we can pave over it if we wanted to. And so I guess my question is, who owns this stretch of property, right? Uh like.
Is it part of the right of way?
The lot owners, i- it's part of the common area that's maintained by the lot owners.
Okay.
It's not owned by the town. It's not a public way. And the sidewalk is not.
But is it like a right of way? Like, is it?
Cause why, why are we even here then? If we, like, why do we have jurisdiction?
Because it's a condition in the development approval that there be this type of sidewalk.
When we did Pleasant Street, there was a discussion about with with Marion. Uh there was a discussion about having sidewalks. On both sides of the street and we agreed to let her just have one because it was a dead end and all that sort of stuff. So my inclination would be to say, okay, if it's too hard to maintain grass pavers, then put in a real sidewalk on one side of the street. And 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 I'm not at all in favor of saying, oh, no sidewalks at all of any type. And so if there's a problem with the maintenance of the one that they've approved in this completely insane cluster zoning that doesn't allow public access. To the conservation land, then I'd say go back to a real sidewalk.
So I just have a question. I think it, I think what ended up being approved was one side. Am I right, Marion?
Yes, it's only on one side.
It's only on one side.
Yeah.
It's already, it's a, so it's. So in effect, Kathleen, you'd be saying change the one sided park.
On one side and have it be a real sidewalk. If the, if the issue is the maintenance of grass pavers and people don't know how that's going to work. Well, then put in a real sidewalk.
Well, when you say real, you mean paved, whether it be asphalt or. I mean, at the time, we we had said that to uh the applicant, the developer. That if you want to widen the road and have a little distinction between the sidewalk and the road, that you could do that. And this is what he chose. And, you know, whether he chose this with the intention to come back later and have this request. You know, it's hard, you know, hard for anybody to predict, but, you know, this was subject to a very lengthy. Uh process and it was, you know, at a real reluctance that the board at the time agreed to this concession. And I don't, I don't think we should take it lightly that it was a concession, that, you know, it was. It may be a private road. We have lots of private roads in Milton. And, you know, our standards, we talked about needing to be revised because our standards for a road width are. Believe to be too wide. However, when you take it down narrower than what's even recommended, I think it went down narrower than twenty feet. Which is what we know the fire department requests. I believe it went down to eighteen feet here. And then take away the sidewalk, you're making for a condition that is totally way off from what our rules and regs are. And the only reason it came to us that way is because it was a negotiation to avoid a forty feet. It shouldn't set a precedent uh uh for other things. Um and it shouldn't be considered to be good practice to do. Our hands were tied on that. So that's the history.
I I agree with everything you say. The only thing, I guess where I'm going with my other line of questions though, is if this truly is going to be a gated community. And the town, other, nobody else in the town is allowed to go through there and the the sidewalk is not owned in this case. By the town and it's owned by the property owner. So that, you see where I'm going, like, again, it's not like most streets in the town or most. Private ways, I would imagine the town has like responsibility, although maybe not responsibility for the streets, but they. Okay, well, so then there you go. It's a private way. And beyond that, well, I actually know, I stand, I I I'll stand by my last comment. Even if it was a private way and it was connected or, you know, folks could walk through there or get to something. I would a hundred percent agree. I mean, you'd need, you need a safe, safe way through, but this, again, that's why I'd like. I don't know, again, if Tim's on or Allison knows, if this is truly going to be a gated community, it kind of changes my opinion.
Well, I can tell you that, I can tell you that there is a gate, there is supposed to be a gate installed after the development is completed. And that's what the neighbors, that's what the lot owners have been talking about. But a private way is a private way. I mean, there is no, in theory, public access to a private way. So whether it's gated or it isn't, it's.
I mean, I was just zooming, I mean, granted, you're the lawyer and I was just Googling, but it does, I'm seeing some very conflicting information online about that. I mean, there's private ways that people, I mean, are people getting pulled over for driving through them because they're trying to get to like a park or trying to get to things? I don't believe that's the case.
I don't know if it's appropriate for me to interject, but I'd like to at this time and and thank you for hearing me. I know there is concern in this town about setting precedent as there is a lot of development at this time and I appreciate the time and consideration that you guys have put in. Years prior, and I do understand and appreciate that very much. But I will say that if precedent is a concern, I don't know of any pending applications for another gated community. And if any that actually exist in the town of Milton, and I do feel that that's what makes this street unique. And um and it's the reason that I bought the property, frankly, and um, you know, I I really wish that. That I'd be heard a little bit more tha- in this way that, you know, we're we're responsible for maintaining it. We're responsible for. Uh how it looks and um and, you know, we're. We've we've bought this land and and we're stuck with it and and we're making plans to to make it work, but. But it's 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 not working and I I don't feel that. And we all did the best of what we had back then, right? And and now we're in a different time. And I I don't think that this should be an example of all the private ways in Milton. Because it's just not the same. Um so thank you for hearing me.
And not only that, if I may add, um, you know, the idea that we'd put a sidewalk on one side of the street, I mean, it's a cul-de-sac, right? So, and the idea that, um, you know, elderly people may want to walk on a sidewalk. Grass or pavers, I mean, they're gonna want to walk on a freshly paved, easy to roll on street, in my opinion. And same with the kids. So I just, you know, to hang your hat on these ideas, what could be. Again, when the property owners are in full agreement on how to handle this and this is a gated community. I just don't see why, um, you know, we have to look back on on things that were done in the past. This is different. And we respectfully ask that you help us out, because everyone's in full agreement and if we're not asking for anything, that doesn't make sense.
Yeah, and I'm I I just want to jump in quickly too, and I know it's late. Um so I'm very sympathetic to that, but. I want to also add that while this is somewhat of a younger contingent currently present. The signatures on that petition are not exclusively young in nature. As a matter of fact, the gentleman across the street from me, we consider himself to be a grandfather before anything. So you, we do have a mixed range of ages here. It's not just young people. So that support is not just coming exclusively from exclusively from one uh age group. The other thing I want to add, and look, I don't know the history of uh, you know, cases that have been seen, but I do happen to know of one small neighborhood. That, you know, while different, does feel relatively similar in terms of. I would imagine fitting the definition of a cluster vel- development, and that's Mary Webster Lane. I have friends that live there, very tightly congested neighborhood that was recently developed. They have no sidewalk. The residents are all live in close proximity to each other. Kids walk from one neighborhood, one house to the next. And they share each other's uh lots, basically, as the way to get from one house to the next. And that's off of Reed's Dale. Which is an extremely busy road. Uh far busier than Ford Red Ranch, uh Ford Ranch Road and Hillside combined on their best day. That is a road where people consistently drive in fifty to sixty miles an hour and it's right there. And it also doesn't have a gate. So, you know, I understand um what Tim was speaking. I understand the importance of plans. I understand the importance of precedent. And how it plays out in these cases, but I also think, as evidenced by the case you saw before, which seems to be. A unique application for this town, which is growing before our eyes and something that I found very exciting, that people care so much as a new resident. Like, new things are going to come about. So plans, while are intended to set the course. I also know that they're meant to, you know, be uniquely applied to situations. And I do think, as what Ally said, my neighbor, very eloquently. This is an extremely unique case. And I also think there is precedent with a recent cluster development in Mary Webster Lane. So uh I said, I echo that and I also just hope that the board sees past what I understand as well was a very trying. Long and contentious initial approval. And sees its way to see the current landowners, the future residents of Milton. The people who have chosen to raise their families here, who are buying into this town, who, for whatever it's worth, and I hate to use this argument, will be paying the taxes here. This is what we want. And you have unanimous support for that in this neighborhood. So I know that there are scar tissue regarding this development. I knew that when I bought it. I did the research. You Google the neighborhood. It's right there. But that was seven years ago. And this is us here now, and this is what we want. And you have every single one of us. So I hope that is enough to sway your opinion. It's almost eleven o'clock. I appreciate you hearing us till then. Um but that's, that's all I have to say.
Hey, thank you. Um I'm just trying to get into that shared folder to see, to see that. Uh petition that you, yours, you're telling me it was unanimously assigned. I'm sorry. I'm so tired. You know what I mean? Everybody in the road signed it.
Well, for what it's worth, we have a timeline now because we can't go past midnight, so.
Okay.
Do we have someone with their hand raised? Autumn?
Oh, Autumn is, is she from the prior thing? Autumn? Hi, Autumn. How are you?
I, yeah, I stuck around really for no reason in particular, um but I think I have something that might be of help. In making the decision, I live on Woodward Court, which is by St. Agatha's. It's a private way. We have no sidewalk. And we, having it be a private way doesn't stop people from driving or walking. Um but people are constantly walking up and down our street and um it's, I mean, you could look up. If anything has ever happened, but it seems quite fine, safe. No one seems bothered by it. Uh the street's super thin and like one car fits and people walk their dogs and just seem to be living normal life. Uh it is a private way. So I I just thought it might be of interest to the topic.
Okay, no, I appreciate that. Good citizen tonight. You get the good citizen award for jumping.
Just hanging out.
That is interesting, though. I I went to St. Agatha's and I did not even know that was a private way. I I'm very familiar with that street. Yeah, you're right. It's a pretty quiet street, right? I think.
Yeah, it's pretty quiet, um but.
People are coming out of school, though.
Yeah, it's not too bad, but yeah, we have no sidewalk.
Right.
At all.
Okay. All right, so. How are we gonna decide tonight? I'm going into the shared folder to check, okay? But you, um, does anyone else on the planning board want to talk about this? While I try to find that document, so I have it. Uh anyone else on the planning board want to um? Talk again, or have we gone all over?
I just was gonna say, this this grass paved sidewalk. I just don't see people using it, to tell you the truth. And we can go ahead and we can enforce it, we could put it in, but honestly, I just don't think. It's going to be used and it's going to be something that the neighbors have to maintain the neighborhood. And I just don't see it. I I highly doubt it's actually going to be used.
Yeah, I I agree with you, Meredith. I just, I, but I also, like, not saying what, what way I'm going here. I just, but I I get Cheryl. I think Cheryl, you're the one who made the point like about the precedent, like, this was a very large project that a lot of folks got together on. These were in the plans. These are known. You know, it's, so I wasn't on the planning board at the time. I didn't go through this. I think we've had similar things, not similar in the sense of what it is, but similarly, things have come before us. And, you know, we've said, hey, why don't we change it? And then some folks will stand up and say, yeah, but we just went through a long battle and a lot of people came together and came up with these things. And how easily you guys are changing something a couple of years later. And so I do like that we're like, it, you know, and I apologize, because I know the neighbors are sitting or listening, watching. This is an awful experience, I'm sure, but it's, I I I agree, like, we gotta go through this process because. I'm sure there's a lot of other folks that could be watching this or will watch this and say, hey, I was part of that process and wow, they made the decision pretty fast. To to change something that we spent a lot of time on. So I do think we should, we should really consider it.
Okay, thank you for giving me the time. I think I have found. No, I have not.
How many name, it would, is it like ten signatures that we're looking for? I mean, it sounds like it's just, it's it's affecting one side of the street though, right? I'd imagine it's the folks that are on the call, probably on that side of the street.
Unfortunately, I am not seeing the.
I'm not on that side of the street.
Yeah, so.
I don't know that it really matters. I mean, you know, I I think I I'm looking to see whether it's here. I mean, I wasn't on the, um, I wasn't on the board, as you've mentioned, you know, when this was approved. Um but I've heard enough about it.
I, I I I'm, I'm just being honest. I, I, I'm, I'm just being honest. I'm on the fence. The thing that I, I think Meredith has a really, first of all, I, I totally know that Cheryl went through a lot because I came in wide-eyed and wow. Um, I think Meredith makes a really good point about it, probably not getting used. Tim made some really good points about safety.
Danny, I think it might be under Kessler.
Okay, the Kessler letter.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, there it is. Okay.
Yep, that's it.
And I, Danny, I just had a question. Cheryl, like, I don't know, either Cheryl, Kathleen, do you think it mapped? Like, cause I do agree with the comments that you're making, but does it? Do you, do you have any opinions about the, um, the fact that this could be a gated community? And this is really sectioned off from like the town? I mean, like, cause I think of, like, actually the, the comment that, um, or the area that, um, Autumn is in that St. Agatha's area. I mean, that, I do believe that's a street that goes through. It's not a, if I'm not mistaken, it is, I don't think it's a, like a dead end, right? Um.
No, no, well, technically it's a dead end because it goes into the St. Agatha parking lot.
Oh, right, right, right. But, but.
It also goes into St. Agatha's road.
Yeah, and so, like, if we're starting over, you might need a park, like a, a sidewalk on that street because people are accessing, accessing it, right? But it sounds like this is.
I mean, I live on a dead end private lane that has ten houses. And we get people who walk down the lane with a dog or with whatever. You know, and whether it's a gated community today, we're, you know, maybe the folks will or will not wanna keep it gated at, at some point. It was, the gated part was not part of our approvals. And whether we make gated sidewalks or something that, um, you know, really, um, are, are, are the long haul. Whereas, you know, people may change their mind about whether the gate's a good idea or not. You know, if there's an emergency, if you have an ambulance, fire department called, you know, how does the gate, you know, function? Maybe people won't like it with snowplow. You know, whatever, it, it, how it functions. So, I mean, I, I guess, um, just to answer your question, though, um, Rich is that it was never, uh, contemplated when it was approved as a gated community. And I don't know that there's been anything in Milton in our planning or in our rules and regs or anything that addresses gated community versus, you know, anything else. So, I mean, it's not, I guess it's not something that we've encountered before.
Well, I'm having a hard time getting over the fact that it's a cluster development that nobody has access to. Fine, don't put a sidewalk in.
So I, I can actually maybe help with that a little bit, and Cheryl probably just remembers this too. So a lot of that conservation land that this abuts is wetlands. It's not designed, it's not, you would not go necessarily hike through this area. And it's also at the foot of the Blue Hills. So if somebody's gonna go and want to go into conservation land, you're, the Blue Hills are right there. So you're, you're really not.
That's never compelling. I'm, I'm an expert witness on a case in another town. And it's right next to Minuteman Park. And so, but you don't get to get rid of your open space on the fact that it's right next to the Minuteman Park, but yeah.
I think, I think what Kathleen's, uh, referring to is that, like, uh, the, we did, I think it's called Marina Estates. And I think Marion, you were, were you the attorney for that one as well?
Not on Marina Estates, no.
No, okay, sorry. So that one, you know, there's, uh, it's a cluster development. It has, it's not wetlands, but it has open space. It's a private road. Um, and, you know, uh, I wasn't involved or on the board when, um, the, I think, Mary Catherine Way, I think that's the name of it, was, um, was approved. I don't know what the thinking was then. But the thinking has evolved over time, um, to, you know, the rules and regs say a sidewalk on both sides of the road. And then there've been lots of requests for waivers in the board. Lauren, when Lauren Massey was assistant town manager, she put together a chart of, I, I think at our request of what waivers have been granted over time. And the board made a conscious decision, um, that we, while we didn't, we understood sort of the challenges sometimes of doing a sidewalk on both sides at the time, we were, it was being waived, but being waived altogether was not common. And then we, we've had a discussion at this board more recently of not wanting to waive the sidewalk requirements. And so, you know, I think we have to be careful. I know people don't like to hear about precedent. But when we've talked with town council about it, and you know, what's to say that another development, whether it's public or private road that has ten lots on it, if you, how can we justify, well, in that situation, you said you don't need a sidewalk. In this situation, you say you do need a sidewalk. I think I have a hardship too. Or I think my situation is similar to yours. I don't think I should have to do a sidewalk. And it becomes hard to defend. Um, and that's, um, something that I, you know, whether, we have to remember that, um, that we have this, this bigger picture to keep in mind.
All right, well, we gotta put the baby to bed because it's eleven oh three. So let's, um, let's, um.
Can I just, sorry.
Make a motion. Yep, no, go ahead, go ahead, Rich.
And Kathleen, I, I'm just acknowledging your point about the, um, that you just made. You, you said you, you couldn't believe that it was, and I, 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 I get that. My, my thing though is, now that, it, it sounds to me like, I think Cheryl or somebody, Tim, maybe somebody made this comment. This sounds like it was a lot of concessions because it could have been a forty B, right? And so it sounds like maybe they made some concessions that maybe we wouldn't agree with today or others might not agree with that were on the planning board then. But again, I guess my, my thing is this. Um, and again, that's why I harp so much on that gate and the way it's situated and the geography of the street. Um, it, it seems to me like there's nobody that would access this road, but people that live there. And I don't know that we have very many areas in town like that. Um.
Okay.
I don't know. That's, yeah.
Well, do you wanna make a motion?
Yeah, I, no.
Oh, no, you don't wanna make one? You're still on the fence? Okay.
No, I, I am. I just, I hate, I'd say.
You hate, you hate going forward. Okay. All right. Meredith, do you wanna make a motion?
Um, sure.
Okay.
I would make a motion that we accept, um, the, um, the request um, for there not to be a sidewalk on this specific location at Wentworth Farm.
All right, I will second.
Can, Danny, can, can we just make sure the language reflects that this is an amendment to the special permit?
Amendment, okay.
Okay.
That's corrected by Tim.
Okay, I will.
I would never have said corrected, Meredith, uh, helped.
That's okay, Timmy. You're Timmy tonight.
You're, you're Timmy on the, on the screen, just so you know. I didn't know who it was. Um, all right, but I just want everybody to know, I was fifty-one to forty-nine, but it's eleven oh three. We gotta put the baby to bed and everybody made wonderful arguments. Okay, so, all in favor? Oh, Meredith's motion. Yeah, is anyone in favor of Meredith's motion?
Are we supposed to, are you just supposed to?
I'm just roll call.
Roll call?
Yeah, okay, roll call, um, Rich Beeler.
Yeah, I, I, so I'm gonna say yes, but I will say yes because I'll be honest, I don't know that I'd ever say yes to this type of request anywhere else in town. And it's only because of the, the, you know, this very specific street or very unique street. Um, and I don't think, I don't think I'm setting any sort of precedence on it because I, I, unless somebody can tell me where we would put a development like this, a cul-de-sac that nobody, and I'll be honest, somebody who's bringing a project like this, I'm kind of in more in Kathleen's. Um, and I don't know, I don't wanna put words in your mouth, Kathleen, but like, why would we set a street up that people can't access different areas? But anyway, I, I, I talk too much about a yes.
So welcome citizens to a very tired board. Okay. All right, I'm Cheryl Tagayas.
No.
Uh, Kathleen O'Donnell.
I agree with Rich and, and, uh, because I, and, and seriously, if this had come before me and I was on the planning board, it would never have gone through with a restriction like that. So since it's some gated community that nobody can go to, then fine, no sidewalk.
Okay, all right, well, the, the.
And I know that there's case law that says that our decision in this instance does not create a precedent for anything else. Yeah, there's all kinds of case on that.
So good. Well, that's a relief.
I don't think this will ever create without a guy.
Okay, well, citizens, thank you, um, for your civic participation.
You didn't vote, Danny.
Oh, again. I, I, I second the motion, so Denny Swenson in favor, yes. Okay, so, um, Tim? Um, we made the motion, we did this properly? All right, well, I guess we can close that discussion. Marion, thank you. Have a good night.
I think we probably should have closed the public hearing first before taking. Procedure.
Steve.
So I, I'll, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. And maybe we can have the record reflect that we, um, I don't know how that works, Tim.
I, I can do the revote, okay. Meredith's motion.
No, first closed, we have to first vote to close the public hearing.
So I'm, I move to close the public hearing if someone's.
Second, okay.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, have a good night. All in favor, Meredith Hall. Have a good night. Thank you so much.
I.
All right, okay, uh, Richard Beeler?
Yes.
Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
Danny Swenson, yes.
And Cheryl Tagayas, yes.
Cheryl's guys, yes. Okay. God, you would hate me on a martini. I can't even. All right, let's see. And now we're gonna do a revote, right? Or do we need to?
Yes.
Oh, those two are revote. Okay, so Meredith's motion. Do you wanna make it, Meredith?
Sure. To make, Tim, do you want me, will you repeat how you would like me to word this? I just wanna make sure.
We're just gonna vote to amend the special permit to remove the requirement for a grass sidewalk?
Perfect. Perfect. I second.
All in favor, Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
Rich Beeler?
Yes.
Cheryl Tagayas?
No.
Meredith Hall?
Yes.
Danny Swenson, yes. So we're done.
Almost done.
Okay, I guess I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Yes, since I have low battery, I'm.
I just wanna mention, I think I need a written decision because I think they have to record this amendment.
And, and Danny, I'm sorry, I, I wanted to let you know Ned had texted earlier to inform us that he and the attorney for the Bacardi's are very close to, um, agreeing on looking at that buffer zone and the trees from the Bacardi property. They're gonna flag it from that side.
Okay, and that's great to hear. Yeah, I'm looking forward to seeing the flaggings.
Now, I've also, I sent a draft to the accessory dwelling unit to Tim this evening, so.
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you for that update.
Yes, while she was crocheting and participating at the board and.
Needle point, needle point, needle point.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, second, anybody second?
Second.
All in favor, Cheryl Tagayas?
Yes.
Rich Beeler?
Yes.
Meredith Hall?
Yes.
Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
Danny Swenson, yes. Good night, everyone.